Good evening, this is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Yesky, thank you. Our first item this evening on, first of all, just to let you know, one item has been postponed, that's Stephen P. and Maria Musante for a final coastal site plan at 30 Sunset Road. Our first item this evening will be a proposed stipulation of settlement on a final coastal site plan at 29 Davenport Avenue. Seated on this item are all the regular members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is a settlement of an appeal that was taken of the decision that you...
Yeah, he doesn't have a mic, but that's okay. Oh, he has to turn it on. I never knew the podium opened.
We're something new all the time.
Yeah. Okay, so...
This was a coastal site plan application that you approved back in July of last year. An appeal was taken. We have arrived at a, an agreement which has been memorialized in a stipulation for judgment which you've received. We've made two changes to the plan that you approved. One is that we have shortened the deck by 12 inches, so it's 12 inches farther away from the easterly property line, and we have agreed that none of the plantings between the building and the water can be greater than 10 feet in height, and if they grow longer, taller than that, we will have them trimmed so that they are no taller than 10 feet.
Okay.
And otherwise, all of the other conditions that you placed on, that approval will remain in effect.
Do the commissioners have any comment? Nope. Okay. Mr. Mackray, could I have a motion on this item?
A motion to propose stipulation of settlement for coastal site plan PLPZ 2019-00249. Motion to approve settlement with the revision that all vegetation in the rear yard of the applicant, Morgenott's property, be limited to grasses and plants.
Hold on a second. I thought only the applicant, only the applicant could speak. Last time we did a stip, we didn't let the public speak.
No, we did, because we were forwarding comments up to the state, up to, we can't, because the judge can ask if there's any comment made.
All right, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bella Fure, go ahead. And we'll tell Nick to stop and start again.
Okay, actually, I'm here, you know me, I'm Barbara Bella Fure, and I want to thank Mr. Morgenott for his settlement, and thank the commission and their staff for all the work, because you many times showed me how thick that file was.
They trotted it out for you every time, okay.
And I just want to really express my appreciation. The settlement slightly reduces the size of that large detached deck and does preserve some of my view shed. I'm grateful that it includes Mr. Morgenott's commitment to planting only low-lying species of shrubbery, grasses, and plantings. It covers, as Attorney Higney described, the entire rear yard, and we all appreciate this provision because it protects the rearmost views from my unit and all those of my association neighbors. Should any of these low-lying species happen to grow higher than expected, Mr. Morgenott is agreeing to keep them pruned back to 10 feet, and while it's unlikely that low-to-the-ground species will grow that high, Mr. Morgenott's kind agreement to prune them is a reassuring insurance policy. The conditions of the decision letter still require that the new landscape plan be approved by the P&amp;Z staff and by conservation to ensure that the plan includes only species of grasses, plants, and shrubbery that are low-lying, no trees, as stated in the stipulation. We're all grateful for the work that's gone into this and to move forward with Mr. Morgenott, planning and zoning staff and conservation on the new landscape plan, and we wish Mr. Morgenott well with his new construction.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Bella Fure. Having opened that up, do any other members of the commission wish to, any other members of the public wish to speak? No? Okay. Sorry, then.
That's correct. Here we go. For the applicant, PLPZ 2019-00249, with a proposed stipulation of settlement, motion to approve settlement. The conditions there, they noted that the, "All vegetation in the rear yard of the applicant, Morgenott's property shall be limited to grasses, plants, and low-lying shrubbery, not taller than 10 feet in height, which will be pruned as necessary so as to remain no taller than 10 feet in height." Parties have also agreed to that the second-floor east-side deck of the applicant's residential structure will be shortened by 12 inches towards the west, as shown in the revised plan as submitted.
And just to confirm, everything you just noted, Mr. Mackray, is in the stipulation, correct? In other words, you didn't say anything that's not in there?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then. Our next item is the Greenwich Public Schools Western Middle School to discuss the location of a generator reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee.
Good evening, members of the committee. My name is Dan Watson. I am the director of facilities for the Greenwich Public Schools. I have with me Mr. Richard Silio, who represents the engineering firm of Landmark Facilities Group. We're here tonight, we had presented some drawings to the Architectural Review Committee, and they had some objections to the location of a generator that we are proposing for Western Middle School. A little background in the school, there is currently a generator that's located within the school. It's undersized, it's in disrepair, it's going to be replaced, no matter what we determine. It's not functioning, it's not protecting the assets of the town at this time. So, we have it in our budget to make a replacement of the generator that's sized correctly for the school. The generator, we've been in design for about a year on it, we have looked at just about every location available around the school. We selected a location that is not, I don't want to say visible from the main road, but certainly isn't in front of the school, and the reason we selected the location is that it is easily accessible for maintenance, easily accessible for refueling by a delivery truck should the need be, and it's also directly adjacent to the switchgear room, which the generator has to tie into to provide power to the building. A lot of time and effort went into the location of the unit. It's located next to a brick wall that's part of the building, located next to a loading dock area, and also where the garbage bins are located, so it's not a particularly aesthetic area. So, some of the objections that the ARC had was its, its location, proximity to the building, it's within, I don't know, rich 10 feet from the building. It's in relatively close proximity to the building, as would be needed. We've got other, we've got photographs of some of our other facilities where the generator is in just about the same location to a building. This particular position was not just picked out for ease of construction, again, there was a lot of time and effort that went into it. One of the objections that the ARC had was that the generator will be visible through first-floor windows. The first-floor windows that they are speaking about refer to the kitchen area, it's not a classroom. We didn't feel that that was an impact on the school, so...
But you have the, the legal distance that you have to have from the window to the generator, I mean, I'm sure you do, right?
Correct. Go ahead, Rich.
Well, we do.
Are you good, I think, does he have to stay by the mic? No, right?
Sure. Hi, I'm Richard Silio from Landmark Facilities Group, we're the engineering firm who specified the generator. Where's the current generator?
It's inside the building. It doesn't represent well...
Inside the building, isn't that a legal...
No, it doesn't represent well on this plan, but it's actually adjacent to the mechanical room, so it's completely interior, and as Dan pointed out, it's rather small, it only provided power to emergency lights.
Can you, I'm looking at Google Earth, can you just, I can't see the site plan, so I'm just trying to, is it located to the right or left of the loading dock, that's that covered loading dock in the back?
It's to the left. The proposed area is to the left.
So, it's in the grassy area to the left of that loading dock?
Correct.
And so, that bump out is going to help screen it as well?
Correct. That was one of the reasons we selected that area.
And then, just, you're aware of the noise ordinance, correct?
Absolutely.
And so, you'll set it to exercise during daylight?
Mondays.
We're projecting once a week for about 30 minutes around 4:00 PM when classes are adjourned and before the neighbors come home from work.
Before seven, okay. And then, I think the only comment is, you know, do you have enough room to put any kind of fence between?
Oh, screening.
Yes, in fact, this, I'd like to present a plan that shows the proposed 10-foot chain-link fence.
No...
No, 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 no.
You want to reverse it?
The whole thing. So, this plan depicts the elevation with the fence in place with the screening.
Yep.
I have a full elevation also that shows that it's a relatively low impact as compared to the long facade of the building.
I don't think there, I think, looking at the building, I don't have any issue with this location. I think the only, my caveat would make sure that the screening is not chain-linked with infills, but...
How, what is the, what are the dimensions of this? What's the height, what's the, within, what's the length?
Sure. The generator will be about 10 feet tall, it sits on a three-foot-high fuel tank, and it's about seven feet, so a total of 10. And the generator, the dimensions of the enclosure are shown on the previous plan, which I'll provide. This is just a sample of the screening that would exist inside the chain-link fence.
Mr. Silio, what's, what's the color of the screening in the fence?
That is open. In fact, I brought color samples.
Okay, what's the color of the fence itself?
The fence is black. The chain-link is an epoxy-coated black.
Okay. ARC was concerned about looking at the unit from the middle floor, looking down at the unit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The fence, according to the plan that I have in front of me, actually goes around three sides, but there's a gap between the fence and the adjacent windows?
Yes, and that gap will be extended at the request of the review committee. We can hold it...
Extended.
Moved away from the building. They had commented that it was too near to the windows, and we can pull it away.
There's a code for, there's code for that, as I remember.
It's, it's the, the unit's in the right place, it's the fence that's actually...
Oh, okay.
There's windows there of, I guess that's the kitchen?
Yes, right.
And there's an adjacent classroom on the other side of the...
It's a cafeteria.
The plans here, there's a classroom on the other side of the wall, of the brick wall?
Of the brick wall, correct.
And there's windows there?
No, there are no windows. No windows along the brick wall.
No, I'm talking about on the classroom, on the outside that faces the parking lot is the classroom, and then, no, no, the classroom above. That classroom has windows to the left-hand, okay, it does.
At what, at what height?
It's a second story, so they're probably 14 to 16 feet above grade.
And you're pouring a new platform for it?
A new concrete pad.
Okay, and what height is that at?
It's basically a few inches above grade.
Okay, so it's just actually, it's going to actually sit low outside the windows?
Correct.
Okay.
But it's still going to be 10 feet high, so there's a three-foot, this unit sits on top of the tank?
Right.
Is that normal, or it could be on the side?
No, it's not.
It's customary.
That's the way it's done.
Dan had alluded that there is a precedent throughout the district for emergency generators adjacent to buildings. We've brought some photographic examples of those.
Mr. Silio, actually, Mr. Watson, actually, quick question. The generator powers what in the building, again?
The generator, this is very important. The generator capacity was expanded to beyond just the emergency lights, which was the original generator. It also includes the heating system and all sump pumps in the building, so it provides protection against floods, against freeze conditions if an outage occurs in, in winter.
Okay.
And some auxiliary outlets.
Correct. I think there's a walk-in box in the kitchen for food preservation.
And what is the capacity of it?
It's diesel, diesel.
No, but what, how big is the unit?
How big is the...
What's the capacity?
Oh, it's 150 KW.
150?
The...
How's big?
Other...
ARC was basically, they were looking for other locations?
Yes, correct.
They had no issues with the fence, or they, they were just someplace else?
The only fence comment was they wanted the fence adjacent to the building to be brought away, which we will accommodate.
Understanding, actually, looking at the drawings you provided, actually, I think if you put it anywhere else, you'd be, you know, Texas by the time you actually got to the switchgear, so. I would think, actually, the generator is sized actually appropriately for what it's got to, what it's got to do. I would think the only issue I would have is actually the fence itself. If you're saying it's a black fence, you're using black slats, then it will really disappear. Because it's a diesel generator, it won't be as dirty, as fast.
So, we're okay with it?
I think with those two caveats of moving the fence and then the black slats and the black...
Do you need a motion from us?
The size of the unit versus the dimensions of, of the...
Closure.
Of the fencing, how close is the fencing to the unit? Yeah, but...
That's the fence.
It's a few, it's a few feet away.
It is.
It needs some space.
Some service access and airflow.
No closer than three feet.
No closer than three feet.
Yes, because of access.
Okay.
Okay.
We ready to roll?
Yes.
Any comments from the public? Anybody else on the commission going once? Mr. Mackray, could I have a motion?
I want a motion on this.
Yes, we want a motion on this. Pay attention, it's a fast-moving place.
Mr. LaRoe, is this a site plan?
No. No, it's, it's... It was just, it was just an ARC application.
But they want to, they still want a motion.
But because it went to the ARC, and now they've come to you, I think it's just prudent to have a motion.
Okay. If we could just list the items that you, you want to see on the, on the final gap permit, we can just address that.
For the generator application from the Greenwich Public Schools system at Western Junior High School, Western Middle School, excuse me, applicant has proposed the diesel generator of 100 K, 150 KW. Motion to approve location with the caveat that the fence of 10-foot height should be installed with black vinyl and black vinyl slats, that it should be exercised once a week only in after-school hours, 4:00 PM or later. The noise generated by the, by the generator itself should not exceed the limits as prescribed by town ordinance, and that the fence to the, against the building at the kitchen area is to be moved farther away from the building so not as to collect debris or trash. Any other issues?
No.
Do you want to say between 4:00 and 5:00 PM, is that 4:00 PM or later?
Well, it's got to be before 4:00, 7:00.
So, say 4:00 and 5:00?
Between, between 4:00 and 5:00, or 4:00 and 6:00, excuse me.
4:00 and 6:00.
Okay.
Because it's best to have somebody listening to it that they know it's running.
All right, do I have a second? I have Mr. Fox.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ready to roll. Our next item is another discussion item that was added today. It is Bianca 121 LLC to discuss changes to the rear facade at 121 Greenwich Avenue. Mr. LaRoe, could you give us a little background on this, since it was just added today?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair.
We did post it on the agenda last, we reposted a final, revised agenda, excuse me.
Right, no, but just since, since we didn't discuss it...
So, you haven't discussed it?
We haven't discussed it, and we haven't been briefed on it, so if Pat could give us a little brief...
Yeah, I just wanted, just for the record to know that...
We're legal, yeah.
We're legal, yes.
We're legal.
Thank you. The specific issue why this is before the commission, this is a site plan that the commission approved in 2018. There have been changes to the rear facade of the building from the approved plan and work done without permits. The applicant has spoken to the Historic District Commission, and the Historic District Commission has responded back to staff, and also through a letter that I have on my desk here, I'll give it to you in a second, that they have no issues with the revisions to the facade of 121, but there is some interrelated issues or play with the building next door at 117 that I'd like to discuss with the commission so we can get some direction to staff and that we can pass that on to the applicant. Again, so these are the three items that we're looking for, changes to the approved plan, had addressed work done without the approvals, and the impact to 117 Greenwich Avenue, which is the adjacent property to the north. This, for those who can see it, is the approved site plan, and, excuse me, rear elevation of the building that the commission saw. This area that I've highlighted here are the areas of change from the current as-built situation. I just want to point out a few things on this plan. One is the colonnade that covers the stair tower here, that has been removed, and what also is not on this plan is if this, if you follow the cursor here, there is a faint line here that represents the rear elevation of 117 Greenwich Avenue, which is, again, to the north, but 121 also extends behind and northward around the rear of 117. And this area here, if, you can't read the notes on the screen here, but it says exterior of adjacent building. Fast forward to the as-built condition that we have now, the applicant has chosen to clad the northern facade of the rear elevation in clapboard vinyl, and they have also constructed, they've made some changes, excuse me, to the windows and doors. They've also constructed a wall that obscures the entire rear facade of 117. This wall is approximately six to eight inches. It doesn't have any approvals, nor was it instructed to be built by the building department or the fire marshal. So, if I could just go, sorry, back and forth quickly, that's the approved, this is the as-built.
Whoa.
Sorry, the scale's a little bit different, so it looks larger from one to the other, but...
It's very different, okay.
But you can see that where the changes are. I'm just going to do it one more time. This here is the floor plan of the approved plan. If you can see the cursor as I'm moving it in the center of the page here, this wall right here is the wall that is shared on the, what I'm going to, north, the paper, north is north cardinally. This is the eastern facade of 117. This stair tower was approved by everybody building, and then the commission, to be against the wall of 117, that was understood. If you look to the north here is the corner of 117, and you can clearly see that the approved plans had no indication that this wall was being built, or was contemplated. Excuse me. So now, when you go to the as-built plan, you can see again, here is the stair tower in this area, and here is that wall that extends northward to the corner of 117. These are photographs from today. We went out to field and took pictures of the rear. This is the alleyway. On the back, you can see the cladding and a little bit better representation of just the three-dimensionality of the vertical elements in the back of this building. The red box is the area that was done without permits. The items to the, well, it would be your left, is the items of change that have now been cladded, and if you look to the next picture here, you can see a little bit better the facade of 117, which returns back to Greenwich Avenue going westward. So, again, this, this wall is the second bullet point of, of the contention that staff is having with the proposed work, or the, sorry, the constructed work.
Can I just ask a question? So, the, the box is the other person's property, and to the left of that used to be the colonnade and is now...
It does not appear that this wall was built on, on the property of 117. However, it is approximately 40 feet tall, again, it's about eight inches in thickness, and I know the building has asked for information as to how this building was constructed, and if it not is affixed or has altered the facade of 117, which is obviously a trespass onto 117.
And 117 has windows and whatnot, the...
Right. Now, the applicant was permitted to cover those windows on 117 because they have a common boundary, and the buildings were built on the boundary, so 117 effectively had approval that they weren't able to maintain to keep those windows open and uncovered. So, the applicant has done, has followed the building code correctly for the stair tower to the left. What is not approved, again, is the red box to the right.
So, the, the part to the left is approved?
Yes.
So, it wasn't supposed to be that colonnade?
It was, the colonnade was supposed to be on it, but I'm, I'm just saying the existence of it is approved.
Okay, but it was supposed to look like, it's supposed to look like the arch.
The exterior of it was supposed to have the similar effect of column, of the column and arch.
And HTC had no problem with, with taking out the columns and then making it that flat wall, so it's really...
They did not express, they did not express any objection to the changes of the facade.
So, it's really just the red box that's in question?
So, the, yeah, and again, to go further under the red box and the 117 issue, that property was formerly the Betteridge location, now it is Sari's Place, I believe is the name of the institution. It went over a whole renovation in 2017, 1617, I believe, and it also received a, it was granted with a historic facade easement on the property, which protected all four sides as is. So, the question is also, and this will be posed to the, the property owner who's building this, has that been altered in any way? And if so, what is the course of action? Reading the language in the facade easement, it appears that that would have to go back to the HTC and the commission again, because that's a change to 117 site plan in addition to the changes at 121.
I'm sorry, Patrick, you said the HTC sent a letter?
Yes, I have, I'm sorry to interrupt my...
But the letter just is, it's after the fact, they didn't see these changes as, when they were proposed, they saw them after the fact and said that they don't object to them?
So, the, this was brought to the attention of staff by building. We met with building, we, we contacted the applicant, explained to them what the course of action was, which was to go to HTC and make sure that the as-built condition was acceptable, and then...
But it was still an as-built?
This was out there in December when this, when the HTC reviewed the plans.
Okay, so, they changed the site plan, and then it went to HTC, and HTC said, HTC said that they didn't mind the way it looked, but why did we only send it to HTC? Because statutorily, if they're changing a site plan, they would have to come to us.
Well, there was a miscommunication with the HTC chair, we did not receive it until the end of January. I then subsequently sought clarification from the HTC chair that they saw what we have. He confirmed that on Monday, and this issue in front of me, and I don't want to overstate this, it, it, not only is it a violation of the commission's decision, it was work without permits, and I believe it poses a risk to the building and/or others because we don't have it permitted right now, and like I mentioned before, it's a very narrow and very tall wall that is covering that rear facade with no explained purpose or reason for being there, and again, it hasn't been designed or permitted through the building department, which...
And that wall is just a wall?
That is what the...
It's eight inches thick, and it's just a wall?
That is what the applicant, applicant has represented in their drawings.
Okay.
And that's the entire red box?
And that's the entire red box?
Correct.
Okay, but the, but the parts on the left are different from the site plan as well?
Yes, and those changes were, they, they're reflected in the as-built as well, and I can say with certainty that the chair of the HDC has no issues with the changes to the facade at 121 from the, from the approved plans that they saw.
Really?
Patrick, is there any reason for that wall?
I, I will.
May I just?
No, no, hold on, let him finish, Shannon.
Let me just finish.
We'll let you talk, don't worry.
Thanks.
The indication, I don't have any indication from any town department that would be, that wouldn't be involved with this, that'd be fire department, fire marshal, excuse me, building official, our office, or the HDC that requested, authorized, or insinuated that that was necessary for building or code. So it, it has shown up, it has arrived, I let the applicant explain why they think it's necessary, but again, it's, it represents work done without commission approval, but also without building approval.
Okay.
It's interesting, because I'm looking at the plan that was given to us and the elevations, and the note says, new two-hour wall, and there's a, looks like an egress path that passes, passes by that wall or passes by the building.
That's a temporary one, yes.
It's, it's, to me, kind of looking at that, it would seem that actually maybe it's fire separation to provide that egress out of the building.
Why don't we let the applicant tell us? You can ask them questions rather than.
Uh huh. Before we move on to that, I'm kind of concerned, we, they, according to, according to the site plan for 117, specific whereas, commission confirmed preservation easement shall apply to all facades of the building, not just Greenwich Avenue, including those that may be exposed now or in the future. So it was kind of an interesting thing, it's all around each side, I'm not too sure if HDC was aware of that.
Okay, so we're, if you would like to tell us.
Yeah, sure.
Your background.
Sure, the one thing, Ron Gishu, architect, the one thing is, with regard to HDC and any approval for 117, I don't know if you happen to have, I do have a photograph.
I think what Nick asked, how did that wall come to be?
I'm not so good into, the, when those additions, their additions are done to 117, that had no fire rating, no, fire rating.
Then it should have been part of your permit application.
The, the 117 owner was responsible for making his wall fire-rated by enclosing his windows. It became after many different iterations and.
That's, it's a separate property, Ron.
I understand.
And so we are sitting up here dealing, because you build a wall.
We built a wall on our property.
Without a permit. And now you're asking for forgiveness.
No, actually, we've submitted the structural drawings, the building department has everything it needs, the fire marshal has everything he needs. All we are looking to do now is say we should have.
No, you don't have a permit.
We should have.
You don't have a permit.
For that wall, correct.
Right, that's the issue.
That's why we're here.
But why did you build it without submitting plans to the building department?
That I can only say is.
No, why? You're the architect.
I had nothing to do with that construction of that wall, I'm here to try and make that wall legal.
Did you design the building?
Yes, and I did not design that wall.
Then why, how did it get built?
A lot of things get built in the world that are not planned or permitted.
You're the architect, you're doing inspection.
I don't live on the job, it's not my, oh, I'm not paid to supervise the project. Sorry, wish I was, make more money.
So, I'm in, in agreement with Mr. Fox's statements. Mr. Mackay, did you have a question?
It seems that if, actually, if Mr. Gishu doesn't know how the wall got built, and we don't know why the buil, the wall is there.
I know how it got built ultimately, it was built to create a fire rating between the two buildings. Mr. Chiapoloni, the owner, has a very, very sizable investment. The people in 117 don't care, they had fans sticking out the back, they didn't care about their windows, their windows are single pane. It's a property line, which was illegal from day one.
So if I'm understanding this.
Illegal.
If I'm understanding this, there were existing windows at the rear of this building?
We were allowed to cover the first two. No, not, there was never a discussion of how many we were allowed to cover.
I see that on the plan, yes.
We were told that the owner.
The stair bulkhead goes up.
Right, we covered two, the owner was supposed to cover the third, he wouldn't do it.
This new wall that covers up the last window.
Our investment was at risk. So he took it in his own hands. Sorry, but that's what he did, he, he's got millions involved in this, and after spending millions on it and having been a tenant there for 28 years, this is his baby and he didn't want anything to happen to him. That, those two floors and the second floor of Betteridge are abandoned, there's no occupants, anyone could get up there and start a fire.
Who's the man behind you?
Madam, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Yes, this is Roberto Chiapoloni, he owns the property.
I just would like to.
Well, then, just one second, sir. I've got to listen to Mr. LaRoe.
I'll just pick up on what Ron left off, and then we'll, we'll get, we'll let.
Go ahead.
I did speak with the building official today, and I, I wanted to make clear as to what the status is, they have a hold on all inspections and, and new permits for the project. I also asked him, have you received all the information that you need to issue the permit, and are you waiting for zoning approval? And the answer is, yes, we're waiting on zoning approval, no, we do not have all the information provided. And they have had conversations, the, I was provided an inspection record that shows the outstanding comments that the property owner was requested to provide, and I can tell you that the building official has said that it's not sufficient as currently exists. So, yes, we need to act on this, but no, I cannot say that the building department would be okay if we granted zoning approval tonight.
So what were our, what are, I'm sorry, sir, would you like to speak before I can ask?
Yeah, if I.
Mr. LaRoe?
I may, I may ask. On several occasions, I asked.
Mr. Chiapoloni, are you getting, is he, you're getting along with him?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
I, I, I ask on, on many, many occasions, the fire department, the building department, how are you going to protect that fan that is sticking out, there is an opening and the window? And, and the fire marshal, I know some of you were present at the time when we had many discussions, the fire marshal has on many occasions told me, don't worry, those windows will be closed. Well, almost three years later, they were never closed, and we knew that it could easily be a fire hazard. We built that wall on our property, it's a mistake in retrospect, because I didn't realize that the builder just, excuse my ignorance, I didn't realize, but the fire marshal stated on many, many occasions, you can prove it, he said those windows were illegal in the first place, that they're not fireproof and they will be closed. I apologize for, for, for taking your time and, and, and doing something. I've been in business for 31 years in Greenwich, I've never crossed anybody, and I'm certainly want to continue to be in business in Greenwich, and I'm here to, to amend and fix anything. But those windows were completely ignored, everything was ignored. If you see what we have done to accommodate that building, they made us, even though there was fire, most of the building was masonry, we had to put triple insulation, double thing, sprinkler, while nothing was done on the other side. Anyway, I apologize for, for again.
Okay, Mr. Chiapoloni.
Thank you.
Hold on just a second, before you ask, what are the options that we have before us tonight? What course of action is, the building department does not have the information that it would need.
Correct, and I, I believe that is a separate, I believe that's a separate distinct issue. I mean, they will need to provide, they will need to satisfy the building and the fire marshal regardless of the decision of the commission, so that, that is sort of a, a separate and aside. The, the way that I see it right now, and I'll let Katie stop me if I get anything wrong, is that if this is a non-consequential change, I think the commission, we, staff can handle it as a revision. If you think it is a change significant to the site plan, special permit granted, then I think the applicant needs to return to the commission to ask for proper approval for it. And then thirdly, is the issue of 117, and how do we address that going forward, which I don't think we need to decide this moment, but if there's been any changes to the facade at 117, unfortunately, the property owner at 117 is going to have to address that with, because then their site plan has been modified and violated.
And does the decision letter for this one require HDC, is that, is HDC advisory to the commission in this capacity, or they, they need to take action?
That's a good question. So the, and for 121's application, Mr. Chiapoloni's building, that, they were advisory, because it was on Greenwich Avenue, and we submit those buildings to HDC because it's in the national register, that Greenwich Avenue is. For 117, it was absolutely brought to the HDC and the facade easement was approved, so the HDC in the facade easement is essentially co approving the facade of that building.
And they, they opined on 117 or just 121? Because this one only speaks to 121?
The issues on 121 are the only related to the letter that you have today from Mr. Bishop.
So, so 117 has to go back to HDC for that wall?
I would tell you, the building official is not, is 100% positive that there's no way this building, this wall is standing freestanding, so there has to be something that was manipulated or fastened to the other building, and so there's a very likely situation where there, the building was, you know, at least things were attached to it, if not, things were removed from it, and, and this wall was built up in place of it.
Couple of questions. You said that the 117 owner closed two of the three window openings?
No, we did.
Huh?
They're still there.
Okay, did the building department ever say they wouldn't grant you an inspection because of a fire code issue?
No, we were required to build a two-hour rated wall detached from their building, we did. This is a continuation of that same.
Right, but, but my point is, it's extended past your building, so I don't.
No, it's not, it's sitting on our building, it is our property. Their property line ends where our building begins. So we continue with the stair tower, which is a two-hour rated enclosure, that two-hour rated enclosure is next to, behind 117, but it does not connect to 117, neither does the wall that's built next to it.
But what's the wall doing?
It is creating a two-hour fire rating the same as our stair tower.
But why do I need it?
Because it, because there's no fire rating built into 117, because it was somehow exempt.
But it wasn't required as part of your permit, so I'm studying, understanding why you submit a building permit, and it wasn't a comment to add this wall?
We were told that they were going to close their windows and create a fire-rated wall.
My point is.
I understand, I understand.
Is you got a building permit.
He just said, well, I'll make this easy.
And then I asked the question, is why you let.
If you would please, when Mr. Fox is talking, let him finish.
But why did you continue with the wall if they didn't?
In my discussions with Mr. Chiapoloni, is that he felt that he was doing them a favor by covering their window, which they didn't do, they didn't do the other two. You can go into the second and the third floors and look into, look at our building through their windows. He said, I'll just cover that too. We're allowed to, it's our property.
And you would see that it's not attached to their building.
It's not attached.
And also, we submitted with the building department, said they don't have the information, engineering plan, that that wall is self-sustaining.
Bill Maher received all the, all the structural information from, from Soundview Engineering, Bob Smarzak, all stamped, all certified, that the, that that wall is not only.
Mr. Gishu, I have that letter, actually, a piece that was brought up, I'll read it for the record. Dear Mr. Valerie, this is sent from Robert Smarzak from Soundview Engineering, it says, we observed a two-hour fire rating wall constructed on the north side of the second and third floor levels that abut 117. The walls are built in accordance with detail sheet 2A and sheet 89 of the architectural drawings prepared by ERG Architect dated March 5, 2018, with the latest revision November 21, 19. I will just note again, and I'll go back to the drawing, the north is the wall that is, the north wall is the wall that's per, perpendicular to, this is, this wall is north-south. So this, this, this issue here, which I will pass down, does not reference that wall. It references the two, the other wall, and it doesn't speak to the northern wall.
You know, he actually made the same mistake, Patrick, where he thought there was north, because it feels north when you're there, and it's in fact the east wall, and no one saw this letter to correct him. He went out and inspected the wall, he knew exactly what wall he was there to inspect.
I can tell you, Mr. Gishu, that my conversation with the building official is the exact opposite of that, so.
Well, you know what, Patrick, I'm sorry to say, that doesn't surprise me the least.
Mr. Gishu, why does the window on 117 need to be closed up?
It was illegally put on the property line.
Okay, it's on the property line. Why does the window need to be closed up?
To meet, to establish a fire rating that has been compromised, from the property line structure to our property. You're not allowed to put windows on property lines, period, and that's been around forever, forever. These windows were installed illegally originally, and they were there, and, and it's three years later, they're still there, and, which is crazy.
But again, I'm trying to understand, you extended the wall because they failed to fill in the windows.
Exactly.
And what I'm unders, trying to understand is, I don't see anything from the building department or the fire marshal says this condition needs to be rectified before we grant you a TCO. You went on your own and assumed there was an issue. There is nothing in writing from the building department or the fire department that said, hey, we got to deal with this situation, otherwise you're not going to occupy your building. Where is that documentation?
Except.
Where is the documentation that you couldn't get a CO without building this wall?
I, I don't have any documentation, except.
Okay, so my question is.
The fire marshal often stopped me when I kept telling you, what are you doing with that third window? He said, what you don't worry about, it'll be closed in the construction.
But he didn't give you a TCO where we couldn't, but we couldn't, we could have gone to once.
But just to give you an example, I, in fact, I.
The problem is.
I admitted that it was a mistake.
We could, they had a facade.
It was a big mistake, okay?
They had a facade easement at 117. They were supposed to close those windows up.
And they never did.
Well, but you're not the arbitrator that we are, and we, and you're, you went and spent a zillion dollars.
I, I get it, but if you look at my history, everything has been.
I don't care.
Me to, well.
Mr. Fox, if I may, please.
I, I realize.
Okay, now, first of all, first, rules. One person at a time, when the commissioner's talking, you don't cut in, you wait till they're done.
I apologize, okay? I, I, again, I apologize for it.
They were respectful of you, okay. Second, second thing, no, Mr. Mr. Mackay wants to ask you a question.
Yes, please.
I have, I'm looking at the stuff in front of me, I'm listening to what you're saying to me, and I'm coming down to basically a couple of different points here. The first one is, we have a facade easement at 117 that seems to have been covered up.
Right.
So we need to address that.
Correct.
The building department is actually talking about works done, done without a permit, so it seems to me that that issue needs to be resolved.
Correct.
By actually getting a permit and provide the information to their satisfaction.
Exactly, and then they need to come before us with all the information.
I'm not done yet.
Okay, go.
Okay, it seems also that we need, actually, the building department as well, documentation from the Greenwich Fire Department concerning the window, closing up the window, why it needs to be closed up, and if this is, works to their satisfaction as well, because it seems to me this boils down to an egress issue.
Yes.
Passing by an open window, an existing open window, which can remain on the property.
Wait, let him finish.
I believe that someone needs to certify that, that whatever was built out there is part of that documentation, is truly detached, a two-hour rated window wall, which I find a little suspect, because if it's covering up the building.
You have all this, no, no, don't start giving us pieces.
Let me show you the picture of the rear of the building.
Okay, but, yeah, no, I've, I actually looked at it after I heard about this.
I don't know, before we did this.
Yeah, okay, so you're noting what Mr. Mackay's telling you?
Absolutely, and I want to come up, please, because this is.
No, no, we're actually telling you what you need to do.
No, no, but he's misinformed about the egress.
No, he's asking a question, okay, he may be misinformed about the egress, but he's asking you a list of things that you need to do, okay? In other words, there's a bunch of tasks that you haven't completed, and he's giving them to you so that we could consider having you move forward with an amendment to your site plan on this.
Right.
I have a concern with the facade easement, but I suppose that the wall is more important. Mr. Mackay, were you finished? You still had one more point, didn't you?
I think we're actually looking for documentation that the, the suspect wall is not attached to the building and actually suffices for the proper two-hour rating. And I think as part of that, it was actually, like I think I said this already, documentation from the Greenwich Fire Department to the nature of why to have this wall, cover up that window, that kind of thing. I need to know that they're actually okay with what's going on out there, because we're looking at facade easements, they're looking at life safety issues, and it seems to me as, that life safety issue was paramount here.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Gishu, this egress that I'm seeing, this stairwell that goes out.
Yeah.
Briefly, explain to me what that is.
Absolutely. So what, the story is this, we were asked to provide a temporary means. We were asked to provide a temporary means of egress from the third floor from 117 to grade, onto our property, by the way. There is no egress, there is no egress onto, they don't own land except Branch Avenue. So there's only one way out. So we were asked to provide a temporary means across our roof.
Stop right there. Who asked?
This is now the building, well, it was ultimately the building department who insisted that we create a temporary means of egress and provide an internal, permanent means of egress from their third floor through our brand-new third floor to down our brand-new stairwell.
Oh, hold on a second. This got discussed, this got discussed at the application time. It was fully discussed, and this was no new information. I remember.
I'm not saying it's new now. It's right, you're right.
No, Mr. Gashu, it's exactly, he's restating it correctly. So the issue that Nick is asking about, the temporary one, is this stairwell in Mr. Chippeloni's building at 121 has not been completed and can't be occupied yet. So while that building is under construction before it gets a CO, Mr., am I pronouncing Chippeloni?
Chippeloni.
Chippeloni, excuse me, I'm sorry for butchering that. Is been asked or been required to provide an alternate means while the final means has not been completed. So that was understood, it was presented during the application process to the commission, and I have been involved with the building department and fire marshal regarding the egress path during construction. So this has all been vetted, as Mr. Gashu has explained.
And may I add something? I own the building also that you see facing this way. I had to have the construction, the fire department asked me to close all the windows next to that walkway.
Walkway.
But nothing on 117. 117, it's okay without any question.
That's temporary during the egress path being, is right.
But on my side, obligatory. On their side, not.
But so you understand that while you're the applicant, the building department can make you do things and hold permits, it's, on the other side, they have to go about it a different way to bring other buildings into compliance. When you're a, when you're a permittee and active, you, they have you as a captive audience. They don't have that ability to do that when they've issued permits for other buildings.
Of Mr. LaRoe. They were permittee for three years. They did a major renovation there, but yet there was no protection for me.
Again, that is a building issue, that is a CO'd building. All I could tell you is you have a current permit, and you've been instructed to do certain things to keep your permits and get them, and that's what the situation you're in right now.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, when I used to do construction and I did what you guys have done, I was required to take down what I had done, okay? That's what people did to me in government agencies in other countries if I didn't follow exactly what I had filed. I believe that my co-commissioners are going to give you the ability to address it rather than make you take the wall down. But in my own construction experience when dealing with a governmental agency, it was done. You didn't just come in and ask for permission later, you got to take it down. They're telling us that if you take the steps necessary, we will reconsider the site plan, okay?
Yeah.
My own experience is not conducive to this, but I'm going to let Mr. McRae have the floor again and give you the list along with Mr. Fox.
Again, I just can't believe you got this far, because when you do a foundation, you have to submit.
Agreed.
A foundation survey.
I got stopped a lot earlier. Now, so.
We realize, we're still allowed to build right now. We don't have a stop work order.
Well, we'll put one on for you then.
We only have, no inspections allowed.
We do that then, on that wall?
We could talk to the building official.
In other words.
They've seen, they know about this December 9th.
The world works really well when you follow the rules. That's how you get the great countries, and that's how you get people like Singapore having their act together, is when folks follow the rules, the Canadians following the rules. You all just went and did something, and what you thought was good, and that you thought you had a good intention, but you knew that we had rules, and you just didn't follow them. Now, I'm very harsh on this, and my co-commissioners are not in agreement with me, so I am once again going to let them give you the path to follow so we can rectify this.
I'm grateful for any help.
Gentlemen.
Okay, just let's start with the facade easement. How do we want to handle that?
Oh, I don't like the fact that, I have a real problem with everybody having agreed to a certain facade, having agreed to protect it, and then it got changed. Now, I'm a lot more concerned about the wall. I don't know where it came from. I don't understand why it's there and what they're, okay, but that's how I feel. Can someone else, I know that I'm taking a hard line. Does somebody else have thoughts? No, you talk, anybody else have thoughts? Facade easement, not, you do a, this is why I get worried when we get an HO and we give a facade easement, and then boom, the facade's gone. That's not the idea.
Improved?
No, that wasn't the idea. The idea is you're supposed to protect it, keep it the way it was. You don't just decide after the fact that you're going to do something different. That's not how it's supposed to work in this town.
But it was the rear of the building that's stuck, and who knows, talking to Bill, Mr. Bishop.
That's not the point.
Because we never care about the rear of the buildings.
I'm sorry, sir, that's not the point. The point was you had a facade, you were supposed to not change it. Katie, you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so if I understand where you're going here, so you're expecting the applicant to submit a revised site plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for that wall? And at that point, you can, you can decide which direction you want to go? And what I'm hearing, that wall should look like it did previously.
Yeah.
For 117. So why don't we just?
This is fire-rated clappard.
Oh, great.
Not vital, by the way.
So then, why don't you, so the commission's made it clear that they want you to come back, so why don't we just let you deal with staff on that at this point instead of taking up the commission's time? They've made it clear that they want you to come back and submit an application, so you can deal with staff, and we'll work with you to get a successful application.
And on the facade easement, if you promise you're going to protect something, that's exactly what you're supposed to do.
And I'm not sure you can not do that, at least without coming back and changing the declarations, et cetera.
Well, no, and even then, we have to agree. An HDC can't come in and say after the fact, "Oh, jeez, this is all right." Okay, Andy, go ahead.
I still, I want something in writing from the fire marshal, from the building department, why this wall was even necessary. And if the adjacent owner was required to fill in the windows, and they, and they didn't do it, why wasn't that brought to our attention? And we need something from the adjacent owner of why they didn't say something, and, you know, is their attorney here tonight?
No.
Did he comment on this?
He did not.
He's probably hiding.
Okay.
So.
They never commented while it was being built either.
Well, okay, but we had this whole conversation at the time you came in for your application. I remember we had the fire marshal comments. So this change in what you needed to do to satisfy the fire marshal that's befuddling Mr. Fox, I thought I was just being dumb. I don't get it either. Okay.
So you've heard what's required, so we'll work with you to, you got it, get an application back to the commission.
I want written documentation, this hearsay, somebody said what? I have nothing to base my opinion on.
Well, Mr. Fox, we weren't trying to hide this. December 9th, we addressed all these things, submitted all the documents we were asked to submit, and then for some reason.
Except for an application to the commission, Ron, so why don't we just leave it tonight, please?
I understand, but we were never told we had to do that at the time.
Yeah, but you do. It was in the decision letter, so.
You did work without, there was work done without permits. You asked to get a permit. You never got the permit since December, so what were you waiting for?
It was an amendment that we gave, all the documentation.
What were you waiting for?
We're going to go back to the conver, no, sir.
Bill Maher has my drawings.
Sir, we're going to go back to the conversation of you had a permit, you know, the rules are the rules, all that. And they're, these guys are mad, but they're trying to cut you some slack.
Yeah, I was trying to.
Me, calmer, and I wasn't going to cut you any slack. So I would suggest that you try to do what they're asking you for, and you work with Katie and Pat. Okay?
We have one question. Can we, one question? We have a, we had an issue this week as how this all came up. We were actually installing, about to install a water line from the street to the building for the sprinkler system, which we're the only building that has one. And they, we had 10 men there and three trucks. They called the building department because they have a valid building permit for that installation, and they were told, well, you're not allowed inspections, and we're supposed to come out and inspect it, so the permit we just gave you is invalid.
That's all building code stuff, so.
Is there any way we could detach?
No, no.
There's a lot of guys that can't work.
I'm sorry. I wanted to build a wall.
Sorry, sir.
They're addressing this as the 9th of December.
Sir.
That's all.
They're cutting you slack. They sound mad, but they're trying to be helpful.
All right, I'm grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chippeloni. Okay. No, I'm done. No. No. Okay, so on that application, on that, we're going to do a stop work?
Yeah.
Now, we will now move into the regular meeting again. Now that, okay, whoever comes next, you're going to have it easy. Oh, it's Mr. Hegney. Okay, so our next, and that was the entertainment for this evening. Okay, so our next application.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Is Mina Liu for a final subdivision at 22 Sound Beach Avenue. And to save you a little time, when last you were before us, let me get all this stuff out of the way. When, I don't keep this right now, do I? No, 121, here. When last you were before us at the 122 meeting, you had some items that were left open. Would you like to pick up from there, sir?
That's correct, Madam Chair. When we were last before you.
Oh, wait, wait, hold on a second. On this application, Mr. Lowe is seated for Mr. McRae, and Ms. Goss is seated for Mr. Hardman. Okay? All right, now you may proceed. My apologies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Hegney for the record. When we last met with you, we needed to obtain a frontage variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. We did meet with them on February 26th, in which they granted the variance. The other item that we had outstanding was conservation comments. They were concerned about the location of the open space and the proposed development plan. Based on our meeting with them, we are not going to be adjusting the open space in any way, but rather planting trees that were potentially endangered by the development plan.
Have, oh, okay.
We do.
No easel, it's there. So would you use your little guy and show everybody where the 8.3% open space is, the two pieces?
Because we have undersized lots, in order to maintain lots with appropriate lot area and lot shape.
No, no, you don't actually have undersized lots, both of your lots.
Well, we have an undersized lot to offer the 15% open space.
There you go.
And so what we have offered is the 8.3% located at the rear of the property, and two open space parcels identified as Open Space L and Open Space N. Conservation had asked us to relocate the line along Open Space L to protect the tree in the northeast corner of the property. We'd prefer not to move the open space demarcations because of the need for lot area and lot space. Instead, we offered to plant additional trees in the open space area to address their concerns. The plan that you see before you is just a feasibility study. Any plan or future development of the site will need to come back through your office via staff. The other trees that Conservation was interested in protecting, we'd like to take that issue up when we come back to develop that site.
Well, the trees that they were interested in protecting, you have agreed to protect them.
We will certainly protect them. We've agreed to protect them.
And you've agreed to replace them if they should be damaged. And how will that be assessed?
We'll assess that based on whether the trees are required to be protected on the development plan. So if the trees require tree protection, we'll plant trees in the open space in compensation.
So what I'm worried about is, Katie, you know how people forget stuff. So how could we make sure that those trees are protected?
Or you can just note it on the plan.
We've heard the site plan sign off, we need to put the appropriate tree protection shown.
Should they make it a note on the subdivision?
On the subdivision?
It could be, it could be done as a requirement on a zoning permit sign off, because we will need to come back through staff, and we can certainly show that on any approval letter, and make sure that anyone who comes to develop that lot in the future will meet that requirement. Mr. Hegney actually provided a letter, March 5th.
Yes.
Those four issues that I think we're really concerned about, actually, I spelled out on that.
You haven't.
We can use that as the conditions, I think. We'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any comments on this application? Does anybody from the public have any comments on this application? Okay, then, so we will close this application, and might I have a motion?
I hereby move approval of final subdivision at 22 Sound Beach in the R7 Zone, creating two lots, 280R and 279R. Lot 280R shall be 7,550 feet, square feet, and Lot 279R shall be 8784 square feet. The commission notes that the proposed lots were originally, applicant is a 1925 subdivision for Greenwich Gardens, and shown on the Greenwich Land Records map number 1039. Said lots have been in common ownership since 1972. The applicant received a frontage variance from ZBA on February 26, 2020. With this variance, Lot 280R frontage will remain deficient at 50.21 feet, but improved from the 48.21 feet shown on the original 1925 subdivision map. ZEO comments dated 1/21/20 were okay, subject to the grading of the frontage, granting of the frontage variance from the ZBA. Department of Public Work is okay to permit. IWWA green sheet was signed off on 12/5/19. Sewer had no comments per the 1/23/20 memo. The applicant has met with Conservation to address their comments dated 1/22/20, and has agreed to plant two new native trees in the open space to replace the 24-inch pine and install a split rail fence along the boundary for demarcation to protect the 26-inch pine adjacent to the proposed rain garden. And the 30-inch oak at the front should be.
Protected.
Should be protected. Should these trees be impacted, the applicant will plant two replacement trees per each. As indicated earlier, as part of the site plan approval process, and indicated on the subdivision, you shall submit a tree protection plan. The commission notes and finds acceptable relative to the standard of six, of section 6-297 of the subdivision regulations, that two open space areas will be created, one of 359 square feet and one of 1,123 square feet, for a total of 8.3% open space. The subdivision map should include a signature block for the P&amp;Z chair's signature in accordance with 6-269, paragraph B, item 16. The note shall be placed on the subdivision map, indicating that no building or structure shall be located within, within areas at least 10 feet from the center line of any drainage facility, ditch, or stream. The applicant shall address any other outstanding staff or department comments.
Do I have a second? Ms. Goss, seconds. Are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I guess I'm tight on it.
May I say a few couple words? I am the applicant. Appreciate all the board give us this permission. This is for me, and my daughter gonna move to the next to take care of me. I used to work for the town. I live in this town 50 years. I was retired from engineering, also from City of Stanford, city engineer. I really appreciate, you know?
Thank you very much, sir.
So that I don't need to check into any withdrawal.
Where you can't have visitors.
Thank you.
There are no visitors in those places in Connecticut right now.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome, sir.
I think probably this is my last time to come to the board because of my age and my health condition. I want to show my appreciation to all of the...
You can always come for entertainment.
Or when you build the houses, you can come back. Okey-dokey. We're now opening the public hearing, our first item on the public hearing. Our next item is 21 Calhoun Drive LLC for zoning map amendment. I'm giving you time to walk up here. And we've spent our wrath, potentially. Potentially, Mr. Tessie. Only potentially.
You left on a super high note on the last one, so can only digress from there, right?
21 Calhoun Drive, a zoning map amendment. On this... The regulars are seated on this application, the five regulars. Do you want to just do the HO and talk about the issues with the HO?
I believe last time...
You combined. We combined it.
You combined them because the issue overlap in my opinion and yours, but...
The next one... So we'll combine the record and add in the 21 Calhoun Drive final site plan and special permit. Again, the five regulars are seated. Mr. Tessie, if you would like to bring us up to date.
Yes, I would. We were last before you... Yes, my name is John Tessie. I represent the applicant, owner of the property in question at 21 Calhoun Drive. My client is 21 Calhoun Drive LLC. I am here this evening with client's representative and spirit of our application, Annette Perry. We were last before you on your January 7th meeting of this year. During that meeting, both myself and Mrs. Perry contributed to our overall presentation. That will be the same this year, I mean, at this application hearing. What transpired since the January 7th meeting, as far as we're concerned, we believe is all, are all good things. Things that we think were consistent with, but we thought to be the consensus of this commission in terms of the site plan itself, as we last presented it. Insofar as the HO zone application itself, my client, and I'll give her and her team and associates heck of a lot of credit, did a lot more digging, as you've seen by the voluminous amount of information we provided with respect to the owner of the property at the time it was constructed, Mr. Ravinsky. We learned a heck of a lot more about him during this period of time, including, as you know, a book having been written about him, some of his accomplishments in business, which were quite remarkable. His contributions to the town of Greenwich, in terms of his civic... Again, contributions in his civic activity. He was friends with a number of notables, as you've read, I am sure. We also note, it's not Greenwich, but it's almost a sister town in certain regards, up in Newport, Rhode Island. He was a contributor there. There's a park named after him. And so far as his property utilization is concerned during life, it was obvious from what we all read and we presented to you, and Annette will present more, he was quite proud of his home. He had many friends who visited him there. He kind of hoped that that property would literally be in his family forever. He built it with that intention. So he's very much in love with that property, in love with the building, as we know, Park Hill. So we think in terms of the essence, the essence being the spirit, the letter and the intention of the HO zone regulations as they exist today, this application meets it, meets those criteria. Both, again, in terms of what I had said, the spirit, as we look through the letter and we take a hard look at the architecture, the period of time, the uniqueness of the building, some unique things inside of the building, as we discussed them with you. Park Hill is also known as the house with seven gables. Very unique. In fact, we had, I had some interesting back and forth with Mr. Kotoria, Zoning Enforcement Officer, on how you analyze this in terms of the roof with all of those gables. And our team spent a lot of time with him, our architect did. And I know there were a few comments contained in his memo that after we've had a bit of back and forth, there was a supplemental memo that, Pat, I assume you shared with the commission members, or maybe you didn't?
Correct. No, the commission members has the Mr. Kotoria revised memo.
Right, right, where he's satisfied in terms of how we analyzed the existing Park Hill building. I think it's important to realize that ironically, the building therefore has a certain floor area of 6,000 square feet, but because of our regulations in terms of what doesn't count, like the roof, we are actually suppressing that building in terms of its floor area as allowed in the regulations. So there would have been a greater differential between that building actually in our supplemental house that we're proposing for the property. But it is still a low-profile building. What we were able to, again, in terms of the HO zone regulations also, is to take another step back in terms of the effect on the character of the area, if there would be an adverse effect. And we believe, and we're going to demonstrate you with facts, not fiction, the fact that there is no adverse effect. There's no real material issue here, that the context is totally appropriate. And we've supplemented that with a lot of information, both analyzing what you've received from area residents and also what we've provided, we're gonna present to you, I'm not gonna steal her thunder, a number of other things. I won't steal Annette's thunder, because she deserves it. She did all the work. I think it's also important to look at what we're really asking for here in context. We have a 1.8 acre parcel of land, which happens to be 90% of the two acres that would qualify, in theory, in a one-acre zone for two lots. The incentive that you actually, if we do some math that you offer, which is the only one we've asked for, was the incentive to allow us to gross up to two, allowing for a second unit, a second dwelling unit on the property. And you have that 150% calculator. If you look at us in terms of what we're asking for, with no issues on coverage, no issues on FAR, and you offer a bonus there, we're below the FAR, otherwise allowed. You look at all its physical parameters, we're not asking for them. We're asking for this one accommodation, which is accorded in this regulation to incentivize people to maintain historic structures such as this. We're asking for, basically, it comes out to 11.5% to 12%, if you will, factor. It's not 150% factor, it's actually 100, works out to like 112% factor to get from the 1.8 to the 2. And I think that's important to realize. You're dealing with a little... With 1.8 acres, eight acres here, not a one-acre parcel in which you're putting on two dwelling units. You're almost there. In fact, as we all know, when we look at the town in total, there isn't one zone where you actually have a situation where you average out to that acreage. We have non-conformities throughout the town. And I say that for perspective reasons. We're not sitting here trying to put, you know, 100 pounds of cement into a 10, you know, pound bat. Another good point there, I think, that you really have to look at in perspective. What are you really giving for what you're getting? With that, with that thought process completed on my part, we really, in terms of the HO zone benefits we're talking about, now we're talking about, we move on to the site plan, for as I'm concerned, in what we've done. And with that, you sought the last meeting for us, again, we believed on a consensus basis, to take to heart what you were saying. And what we were really focusing in on is impact. And but a balance that, in terms of what we really needed on the property, to provide a sufficient incentive to maintain Park Hill. So we've reduced the building, the additional building we're proposing. We've eliminated the second curb cut, as you've all seen. Reduced it both, I'm sorry, reduced it in terms of area. We reduced it in terms of profile. We reduced it in terms of overall height and bulk. We reoriented it in a way where it's more, I believe, more integrated into the setting of the lot by coming up one driveway and spinning off to the right. This is just the existing condition, and I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague here very quickly. But we tried to create that. What we also will show you is that on a picture basis, if you take away the foliage, we're presenting landscape, you'll see a handsome integration. Once you... And now we have also a perspective with the foliage we're creating, where you're not gonna see as much. But so we wanted to give you, we're gonna show you two perspectives, so you can see what's actually there. But in actuality, when the landscaping's completed, it softened even further. So with that, you know...
You're gonna show us.
I'm gonna have, again...
You're gonna show us, because you're addressing all the questions the commission raised yesterday.
Right.
At the briefing. Perfect. Okay.
We're trying.
Okay.
Keep you happy.
Amazon's amazing how you can find those books, huh?
Ironically, there was mention yesterday about one book, and there's 58 books on him. Hello, Annette Perry, for the applicant, part of the applicant. I have... Where to begin? Okay, a little bit of the history that I don't know if you want me to repeat from the last meeting. You don't... You're shaking.
Not necessary.
I think that we were pretty specific in January what the issues were.
Yes.
And how the proposed house fits in with the neighborhood and doesn't appear to be another main house.
Right.
And I think we've seen the comments from the neighborhood. I think everybody, that's their main concern. And I think taking us through the progression since January and now, I think would help us get into where you are today.
Okay, so last time we heard, some specifics from the last time, which was to try to get the house under 4,000, reorient it, make the pavement less, take out the second driveway. So we have done that in a way. And we also kind of sunk the garages a little bit, so it's more screened from the front. I have... Several images. This is the one square, the landscape, two ways, and one square out. So what we did is we had, this is the computer rendering, so...
I think you can disconnect it. Pat can show you how to do it.
It doesn't get out of the app.
Don, can you, I guess, can Don project that onto the TVs? Yeah. No, but, oh, Don can't. He's not doing live TV? Okay. Just so the public could see it, because I think that's what they're here for. Or maybe what we'll do is, can we just let... Yeah, we'll just turn it around or let people... Yeah, why don't we let people, why don't you guys come up and as Ms. Perry is getting all this set up, maybe you guys could just come around and take a look at everything, so... Yeah, there's a thought.
You can sit right in front of us.
Yeah, we'll just throw... Oh, yeah, so those chairs come apart when you lift them. Don't worry, they just do that. I did, no, I did that in my first meeting with the first selectmen, like a million years ago, and it was, I thought it was, I had broken the town.
Well, I think we're passing around.
I'd like to just make a notation of the... On the site plan of the proposed...
This'll work.
First floor finished elevation of 163.5, and the finished floor of the historic home, which is 181.5, which is over a 17, 18-foot differential in the hillside that's right behind the carriage house. Yeah. Thank you.
While you're getting ready, what's the distance of the carriage house from the road? Of the proposed carriage house from the road?
The distance? It's approximately 60... What's it?
Peter, your microphone's on. Low. Yeah. Good.
I want to give you the exact, which I know is more than 60-something, when the 50-foot is the setback required in the zone.
You can hand, you can give, we can share, and you can give some, give some to public. And we'll share.
Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry, your A2 drawing is the third, second one of the set, and it's your...
I'm looking at the wrong drawing.
72 feet.
John just says 72, but I was just wondering...
72 feet.
Okay, it's the same as it was before, okay.
Yeah. So it's 22 feet more than the existing zoning regulations. Okay, so we have taken off an entire floor level. There is no more attic space in this carriage house. The second floor is actually built into the attic, so the roof line, which you could see better without landscaping. The second floor is built into the attic roof line with gables, just like the front houses and dormers. And from the front, it's basically a first floor with an attic that's habitable. The only reason that we are counting the FAR in the attic is because we didn't make it 40% of the first floor. If it was 50%, like in R2 Zone, the second floor wouldn't count. And if we made the first floor larger, we actually have less FAR, but more impact to the neighborhood, because we wouldn't count the second floor. So in this case, we decided to count the second floor, though it's within the attic, and have the first floor this way. We reoriented the house so that it's along this sloped hill rather than sideways. So it allowed us to take the entry area away from the side that it used to be. We used to have the garages here always, so you had a lot of front pavement and a lot of side pavement. Now we've consolidated into one area as you enter to the garages. You have septic area here. This area and the differential to the garage is actually three foot higher, which screens the garage doors from the front. the garage doors from the front. And then this is the view with the landscaping screening on the other way. So this would be reflective of what you would actually see, which is a lot of screening from the road. You actually can see with the elevation, the historic home in the back there. And you can see it actually from the road on either side of the house, because it's more like an L shape. So as you drive, you can see it on the hill from both sides of the house. So that's the redesign.
Can you see that? Yeah, can you just show?
Yeah, I think you guys have small images of the handout. There was a lot of information given from the neighbors. I don't know if we're on to that yet, or if we wanted to discuss a little bit of the aesthetics.
Well, as far as the aesthetics are concerned, are there any questions about the aesthetics itself of the home? I know we spent some time on it last meeting, but I know Mr. Levy, Mr. Mackey particularly...
I think it's because they're near each other.
Okay. You often comment about the aesthetics. I think we tried to embrace what we were discussing at our last meeting regarding the complementing of the many gables of the main house with this new home.
No, I don't know. Did you want to comment? Or...
It's interesting. I actually appreciate that the size is smaller. And I think actually, we had discussed this last time.
Right.
That the building would be, if it was actually built with the original building back in 1920s, subservient to the main house. The information that you provided has kind of put it in a timeframe. Mr. Ravinsky, I guess is, that's the name, right?
Ravinsky, yes.
At the time, being the man, the finance man, but actually ahead of the driver in a car at that time, which was something kind of new. But again, actually, going back to that idea, it would have been hidden, so the garages are hidden. Normally, you're thinking of this as an accessory building to that main house, usually behind it, so you actually approach the house first. But I think with this, because you're using the common drive, you're passing by this one, the facade that's actually on that side of the driveway really is innocuous. The landscape plan that you provided, actually, does provide pretty good screening for that. In terms of detail, you're not really matching exactly what's going on at the main house. This is actually, it's the same type of architecture.
Yeah, it's the same type of architecture, kind of.
Simpler, right?
Yeah.
Much more simpler.
Similar materials.
Again, it's the barn to the house. The barn is, it's, I think the roof line is very interesting. And I think actually, probably, I'm sure that would shake out as you start to put the construction documents together, but I don't think I really want to get into significant detail on that, because it's, whatever's happening in the attic creates that kind of thing. But again, somebody's living above the garage, if you would.
That was the concept, you're right.
The caretaker's cottage, maybe the chauffeur's living there, maybe the maids' family lives there, who knows, right? That kind of thing. What I found actually was interesting is that the garages are actually below level. I'm just wondering, the proposed development for the driveway, that circular area and then going down into the garage, I want to make sure that you've got, check that to make sure you can go in and out with a car, a large car, like a big SUV, that kind of thing.
That's why there's a little turnout in the back.
Backout, okay. And it's actually set really into the ground, that grade plane is tight. Okay. Same thing in the back. We've got elevations from the street side, it's the same thing back, it's really, it's a flat lawn, and it's stuck in the ground a lot. Right.
We're doing all we could to, you know, keep its profile as minimal as possible and in context with the grade of the property itself.
And you know, there was an issue about the grading, about the severe slopes, I think you understand from Mr. Couture. You've got the FAR issues, I think actually the grading...
Yeah, he had one, he had one issue on the new home proposed, having to do with the technicality of the regulations dealing with the two, having to do with the slope of the, within six feet, I think it's six feet of the building. And we go around, we have, as you know, we have different elevations.
Yeah.
We talked to Mr. Sandola, our engineer, I was acting as a go-between friendly, I gave up, and I just put the two of them together. So they're going to work it out. If they haven't worked it out today, they really dropped me off the communication. But I put them together on that last issue, because Mr. Sandola wasn't exactly sure from S U minor what the issue was, and I think it has to do with maybe the rear slope, and it's maybe a matter of just creating a platform, but it's relatively minor. Bless you.
So stone base, stucco, painted wood trim, I guess from the renderings, although I never trust renderings of the first, dark color, brown, black, asphalt roof. But none of these details are, they're similar, but not exactly the same as the...
Right, so that they're similar, they're a little bit muted, so the focus is the historic house, and it's more what you would see in a carriage house or a cottage house with less features.
Are there any of the minor details, I think it was cats on the roof, that kind of thing, or anything proposed for this as well?
I think it would be very hard today to find a cat like that.
I'm just asking, just to know those kind of things, because the information that you provided and the excerpts from the book, it seemed that Mr. Ravinsky was very proud of his house.
Yes. I actually, I have a snippet which says, "The intention," and this is from the book itself, "John had built the house with the intention that it should be the permanent home for his family and never pass out of their hands. It was sturdily constructed of stone, brick, concrete, and steel beams and heavy slate roof to last for generations like the old homes of Europe. The house of seven gables, Park Hill, features six bedrooms," and I can go on, but it's something that he built to withstand the test of time. Unfortunately, I think the reason why this didn't stay in the family was due to a divorce. And very, very interesting stuff. Actually, I know that we gave Pat a book, but I don't think the whole book got circulated, so you got an excerpt. And I actually have something to say about that, because I know that in the Greenwich Historical Society who did block this house, they gave, you know, their whole thing was not necessarily about him, but about the architecture itself. So I won't go back into what we already gave you with the Greenwich Historical Society, but I will tell you that John Ravinsky held the coming-out party for his daughter, as well as his daughter's wedding there, and they had 1,000 invitees. They actually had 350 guests for the coming-out party, and it was published in the New York Times in 19, I have, and I will submit it to the record. And all of it took place here. And the granddaughter of, I think it's Beatrice Proctor, of Proctor and Gamble, was in the maid of honor in the wedding itself. There was, Hearst was an attendee, Rockefeller was an attendee, some very prominent people of the time attended the wedding at Park Hill.
She's skipping all the material, she was planning on reading, just so you know.
Okay, so...
Maybe while she's going through the material, we're going to...
What we have? I would, I think that...
What I want to do is get into this.
Yeah.
Let's get into this.
So...
This is a very good image of, this is a good representation, but the devil's in the details, so I think it would be helpful to call out some materials. So if you're using timbers and stucco and slate, I mean, that would be a good indication of how you're going to detail this. Here, there's a little bit of a confusion of how you're going to detail it. The other thing is, if you're going to look at elements like the front door, which is a very important element in the main house, or the chimney, or you take something which, like in kind, that you emulate, that's where the detail is. So when you come up, there's some kind of semblance of entering the property at large. It's a certain, you know, it's a bluestone, it's, whatever the stone is, or whatever the materials are, the door is a certain kind of door, which is representative of that. So this architecture is, there's a lot of different things and clues in it, but it's not distinct. I would say that the house itself is quite distinct. You have a pitch to the roof, which is pretty severe, and you have a lot of things that are going on that create a lot of interest as your eye moves across. This is a little bit different, it's smaller, it doesn't need quite that kind of, this can be much softer, but I think you still need to define what you're doing, and some of that can be just by using certain materials. And you've used things that look like timbers, but it'd be more successful if they, you say, "There are timbers in here." And so we know how the detailing actually works.
And I think on the elevations from the...
Not that, I'm not saying that you should, I'm just saying that it's, there has to be some feeling about how you're going about this, because this is, you know, this is preliminary. Your idea is quite preliminary, and you appreciate what you're trying to do, and now you have to work out how it works. And the door...
This is still subject to HDC review? The final drawings are subject to HDC review?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Are the final drawings for the building, they're subject to HDC review?
Well, HDC...
Signed off on the HO, but they haven't seen what you're going to do.
It's interesting, HDC, historically, no pun intended, I guess, plays, they're into preserving the main building primarily.
I know.
We're happy to go back and work, you know, present these finer details to them. They don't ask for them, they leave it up to you to seek their additional commentary.
And in this, I'm sorry, before, Andy, but one of the things is, I don't know if you were here that night, but when we were talking about Second Congo, that the commission kept saying, and Mr. Yaski was the first one to raise it, to begin to look at the entire property, not just a building, and that's something that the HDC has not been doing. But if you look at, for example, Christchurch, where the entire property has, it's the old, well, it's been, lost a lot because of Putnam Park, but the entire property has a history. And so it's one of the things that they should look at in our minds. We were just talking about it, that HDC, we would like to HDC to look at the architecture.
We did go before the HDC.
But they haven't seen this.
They haven't seen this, though you did send them this rendition, but even with the other renditions, their comments was to keep that circular in front, so it mimics the top, and to keep stucco and timber alike. So they had comments when we were there about the materials and stuff that we would incorporate.
Right, it was general, you know, in terms of versus specific.
And it said, and they only got...
Or details, as Peter said, but we're happy to go back. You know, if you give them direction and us direction, what do you want them to look at?
Yeah.
Because that's not really their perspective. But I know a number of members on that HDC who would be happy to comment in that regard.
So Mrs. Deluca, we can have them go back to HDC to take a peek at the revised building, because what they saw and what they opined on back when was different.
Absolutely. And if you have other questions about asking them to look at more of the property as a whole, I mean, they're advisory to you in this sense, so that's certainly appropriate.
Yeah, it's fine, because they, you know, we wanted to talk more about that building than they wanted to talk about that building.
Okay.
But they were thrilled about, you know, preserving the main house. So what we'd like to do next, to move things...
Before you move, does anybody on the commission want to make, oh, Mr. Lo?
I'd like to, by starting to already talk about the specific design elements, we seem to be putting the cart before the horse. I'd like to talk about the HO issue, if that's appropriate, Madam Chairman, woman. I'm not seated for this application, and therefore I do not have a vote. I do, however, have a voice and would like to make a couple of comments or two concerning its consideration for approval. I join the commission principally to participate in the preservation of what is generally described as town character. I appreciate and support the need for prudent development, but not everything that is old is venerable and worthy of saving for the sake of posterity. Progress is good, but town character is paramount. The principal message from the input for the P O C D from across all stakeholders and citizens, Greenwich was to protect the character of the town. We, as a group set up here, stewards of the town itself and caretakers of that character. It is within this context that we're asked to follow and enforce land use regulations, and when necessary, to interpret the intent of those regulations. The moment we fail to do that, we run the risk of becoming unwitting enablers for those who would possibly corrupt or compromise this character. So we take this responsibility seriously, and we fulfill our commitment to the town one application at a time. Among the standards for land use in the town's building zone regulations are at least two that do not appear to be met, either in letter or spirit, by this application. First, a design in harmony with existing neighborhood appearance is shown by the exterior appearance of the building and its location on the site, and its relationship to the natural terrain and vegetation, and to other buildings in the immediate area. That's one. Secondly, a determination that the proposed use, quote, "will not materially adversely affect residential uses nor be detrimental to a neighborhood or its residents, nor alter a neighborhood's essential characteristics." In seeking the special HO status, the applicant proposes to essentially shoehorn a second house onto the property up against the side of a steep hill directly on the road. This, to me, appears to be a bit of a perversion of the intent of the HO regulation. Among the, as I understand it, among the 48 full members of the Calhoun Drive Association, 100% of the respondents to a petition, 36, I believe, in all, would prefer to see 21 Calhoun Drive taken down and replaced rather than add this proposed structure. That's a resounding support for maintaining the character and integrity of the neighborhood. Again, according to the regulation, it is the commission's job to, quote, "determine neighborhood appropriateness based on, among other things, the visible impact on the streetscape." So for consideration, to rezone 21 Calhoun Drive from the RA1 to the RA1 HO zone, the property, and I quote, "must possess high artistic values and represent significant distinguishable compounds, components that have yielded or may likely to yield information important in prehistory or history." I would suggest that the presence of a cement cat on the ridge of the roof, or the small human faces featured on parts of the facade of the house, is not likely to yield important information regarding history or prehistory. I also question the attachment of any significance to the name Park Hill. It was very common practice of the time, the early part of the 20th century, to give houses names. Literally hundreds of houses in Greenwich were given names. In fact, at least two neighboring houses had their own monikers. 37 Calhoun Drive was originally called Sunnyside Manor. 38, and across the street, 38 Calhoun Drive was named Rockwood. And I'll note that the applicant, there's a reference in there, and I hear it quoted from the book, about this house was also known as the House of Seven Gables, and I'm guessing Nathaniel Hawthorne may be turning in his grave with this slightly aggrandizing promotion and comparison of this 20th century house to the famous 17th century colonial mansion in... in Salem, Mass., built for Captain John Turner and memorialized by the author's book of the same name. Let me get my notes here. Additionally, the purpose of the HO regulation is not to celebrate or honor the former occupants of the house, whether it's the original owner, a banker, John Robenski, or an Avon executive, James Michelson, who was accused of insider trading. If the applicants truly value the historic nature of the house itself, there's nothing preventing them from preserving it without disrupting an entire neighborhood, imposing a potential eyesore on the community, and materially contributing to the demise of the aforementioned town character.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else from the commission want to make a comment?
I would like to respond, please.
Okay. Go ahead.
First of all, we are not sitting here seeking to corrupt or compromise either the regulations themselves, literally, or to spare or intend of the regulations. You certainly are entitled to your opinion, Mr. Lo, and I appreciate you expressing it. We think that this application itself, in terms of, first of all, the HO zone, because you first said you wanted to adjust the HO zone, and then you got right into the site plan, which is, which is what you have to do.
I'm a rookie. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. My point is, I agree with you.
Oh, Dennis, stay still your lines.
Because you have to, it's not about that, but the point is, you see what you, you did the right thing. You've got to analyze everything in context. I agree with you. We have a difference of opinion, obviously, but you certainly, you can't separate one. You have to talk about the other, because it's the other that really expresses your, it's the other, the site plan application, that really is the heart of your issue. It's not the HO zone itself. It's the presentation that we're presenting to you in total.
Actually, the heart of my issue is what I regard as the misuse of the HO regulation. That's at the heart of it. And then I'm applying other views about the specifics of this particular application.
I appreciate that. You've also, as you expressed, that at the end of the day, at the end of the day, as you pointed out, if we wanted, that if we were seeking to preserve that building, fine. We haven't caused the problems that you believe we are causing to quote the neighborhood. They said, I appreciate your analysis, I appreciate your thought, I appreciate your opinion. My opinion is that these regulations were put in place, and they were very carefully crafted to address each of the issues that you're concerned about, and that this body has to weigh in making a determination here of whether or not, A, the building itself is worthy of preservation, taking into account...
Incorrect. Incorrect.
Certainly, that the existing...
Hold on, sorry. Go ahead and finish, let him finish, Mr. Yaski, and then...
That the existing building itself is worthy of preservation. The commission is to make that determination. It is to take counsel, not absolute, but counsel from the Historic District Commission, and is also to weigh the materials that are presented in support of that application itself, in that argument. We've presented a lot of material, some personal, some dealing with the building itself. It's all about weighing, weighing, which is this commission's job, the presentation materials when it comes to an HO zone application, the opinions expressed by the HDC, and certainly the opinions expressed by the general community. What we have tried to do here is address all, we haven't completed our presentation, we were about to, but you obviously want to tune, you're entitled to make your points.
Thank you.
So what we would like to do now is to address, actually, the issues that you're raising, which are echoed by a number of the area residents here regarding things like impact, which we started to do with our presentation of both the reorientation of the building and the setting of the building itself. The building is actually set 72 feet back. Zoning would allow 50 feet. Park Hill could come down, Park Hill, I know, forget calling it Park Hill, the building. I know you don't like that. It's fine. Could come down. Another building could be built much closer. Anything is possible for that property. Interesting about this application versus what theoretically could happen in the future is, this commission has a lot of control over this development, much more than it can have in a redevelopment of that property, where you're not dealing with building basically over 10,000 square feet. And those controls are important. Overall, we believe that when this application is viewed, and a little bit of a pun intended, when it's viewed in terms of the terrain, and in terms of what we're looking to do in working the building into the property, the front building, and providing the enhanced landscaping, we've softened, we've softened this property's exposure, if you will, substantially to the extent that people really believe that a building built 72 feet from the property line, and that is about 30 feet high, has some type of detrimental effect on the character of the neighborhood, which, by the way, is substantially developed with not only a main structure, but also with accessory structures, many of which having already housing quarters in those accessory structures. And with that, what I'd like you to do...
I'm sorry. Mr. Yaski, did you have a comment that you...
I think we should just let him present.
Okay. And you can, you'll hold your comment?
I might ask one thing.
Yes.
Mr. Tessie, you are correct. The commission has a lot of leeway in this case. Absolutely correct.
Discretion.
We can interpret. You may not have been aware of some other conversations, and it was referred to earlier. We're not, I think it's pretty clear that the commission is saying, "The building isn't just the building." I mean, we are worried about the entire site and the flow of the site. So you have mentioned building again and again and again, and we're got to go into site plan, and it even mentions the building further. I would reinforce Mr. Lo's thought that this is a site, it's historic, if you want a historic, it's a historic site, which is way beyond the building. It's the flow. You know that large estates usually had driveways sweeping up to the main building with very small cottages off to the one side. That's not what's proposed. So in the future, I don't want to have this argument anymore, we are looking at the entire site, the flow of the site, on the HO. Forget the site plan for now. We are jumping into the site plan on details, but I think there's still a big interpretation issue that I hope has put to rest, that it's just not the building, and...
I mean, it's just the building. We've made actual site plan, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, you did.
You did, so how about, because remember, we slammed down those people who were interrupting each other earlier, so we're setting a model. Go ahead, Mr. Yaski.
So as we go through this, and I guess we're jumping into the site plan. Were you combining the two, Chairman?
We did combine, yes.
Well, that's unfortunate, because last time we didn't, but...
No, he did. He says we did.
Not the last time, there's other applications we did not.
Okay. Well, we won't in the future if you don't like that.
Well, I think when you deal with this HO versus site plan, they're two radically different issues, and they get mixed together and lost. And I'm trying to support Mr. Lo. By the way, I am also not voting on this, but feel, I have a voice, and I'm expressing it, because if we go ahead and you move, when you're not voting, you kind of get cut out of the deal at that point in time. So it's our only chance, hence my comment about the entire site. All right? I, to the applicant now.
What I was going to say is, I couldn't agree with you more. We got that from the January 7 meeting, and what we tried to do is take that to heart. There were discussions, again, I call it a consensus, maybe it's a consensus of two or three, maybe it's more, but in terms of the commission members that were voting, one was Mr. McCray, and Mr. Levy particularly, I recall, and talking about working the site, taking a look at that building in the front, which wasn't offensive to them, if it can be, I would say to them, to some, and working into the site, as I said, developing in a way where you've got a flow. Everything you said, we agree with. You know, it's interesting, because you can arguably say, "Well, should that be the HDC?" Not to complicate things more, or do you say, "Well, you know, we'd like, we'd like the ARC to take a look at the flow." I don't know. Are you happy to do it yourselves? The point is, we're totally 100% into that. The flow of this property, the flow of this property was the benchmark for these changes. Okay? We wanted to create, we come to you with just that, one driveway, coming off to, as Mr. Levy was kind of describing the idea, and Mr. McCray was, kind of a servants' quarters, low profile, off to the side, the sweeping driveway continues to the main house, up, and you have this panoramic view from that higher portion of the property. The problem we all have, and as I suggested to Mr. Lo, and in one hand, you want to say, "Well, let's look at the HO," not the site plan, but how do you really differentiate? Because as you pointed out in your comments, you were looking at our site plan and saying, "Well, you know, site plan is important." You have to look at both, because there's all context.
I understand. We went over that. May I ask a question, though? So I think everybody understands this. I was trying to run numbers. What's the regulated FAR for the existing house, including the current smaller cottages? What's the square foot, a ballpark? I just need to know this.
Nine thousand.
It was less than 6,000, or something? What?
Well, the FAR in the existing house is a little over six... No, I have it right here.
And I think the neighbors need to understand this. They probably already do, but I want to make sure it's clear.
Yeah, it's how we count in our regulations, but under our...
No, no, in a regulatory sense...
On a regulatory sense, plus that garage, which is about 500 square feet or so. Was it two car, or one car? The garage we're taking down. Two cars. It's about 500. So we're about 6,500, 6,600 with the...
That's what I thought. And if you, as of right, wanted to build a house there, rip that one down, how big of a house could you build on that zone, that 1.8 acres?
About 10,600 square feet.
That's what I had, too. And with the HO, how much more do you get? It's like 12,000 feet, something, not an extra couple thousand feet, right?
Yeah, and we're proposing 9,500.
Okay. So just, I kept going around these numbers...
About 1,000 less than permitted.
So I hope everybody understands, we're talking about a 6,500 square foot house, that if you don't, if you didn't, you don't go through the HO, you could just build a 10,000 square foot house.
Right.
And if you get the HO, you might get a 12,000. That's the difference. Now, it doesn't count the site, yeah?
And when we asked the neighbors, the last time they were here...
I remember this.
And they gave us the petition that showed, they gave us that signed thing. They all answered, "We would rather have a single 10,000 square foot. We feel that that's more in keeping." Now, the issue that then, I think it was you, Nick, yesterday, said, that that 10,000 square foot house might not be in the location of the existing one. It could be down the hill.
Actually, it's interesting. A 10,500 square foot house, according to the staff report, that would actually put you over the threshold for cubic volume.
Depends upon, as you know, the roof line, but you can go about, as you know, you can go 10,000, 10,500, it could be closer to 150.
At about 8,500, at about 8,500, you get to about 149.
Depends on the...
So technically, at an 8,000 square foot house, right on the street, we'd get a building permit.
That's what I was saying earlier.
Nobody, you know, no review by any of the land use agencies, short of wetlands.
Well, it could be bigger, because you could get half the attic.
Well, you have the, have the...
Well, I'm just saying, just generally.
You can get over 9,000, and I've seen them over 9,000 and not, but you can get up close to 10,000. If you're building into the roof line, you know what I mean, you can actually do that. But, yeah, there could be a substantial home.
Without any review.
72 feet, or, because the right of way is short, you got to pick up some extra, so probably about 60 feet, 65 feet. And it, right, and you build it up, and it could be, you know, all of a sudden, you know, it's 40 feet high. This is 10 feet lower, lower profile, et cetera.
But here, we're, you know, the starting point has to be the HO. I mean, that's something that we're not being asked to discuss tonight. There's no proposal before us for a 10,000 foot house.
Correct.
So I think we have to start with, what's the HO regulation tell us? And we have to, we have to be an interpreter of that, weigh a number of factors. I don't think we should impugn your sort of motives. Some of your motives are to maximize profits and do the right thing. And I will say, I think you've made substantial progress in terms of the orientation, the smaller, second, you know, but I do think these HO prescriptions and regulations are very important. You know, new additions shall not destroy spatial relationships that characterize the property. I think the whole positioning of this, you know, smaller house is quite important. I think, as we've discussed internally, the precedence that, you know, we feel exists for HO types of determinations that involve even smaller properties, additional properties. And, you know, but I think this comes back to this notion that, you know, we have to weigh a number of factors.
Absolutely.
And, you know, preservation of community characters, you know, overriding factor and everything, but I think the gateway here is the HO, and I think we have to make that determination first, albeit not necessarily independent of, you know, the site plan that you've asked us to approve.
Well, you kind of have to do it, because you look at what incentives are being, that are laid out in the HO zone, and then what is, quote, "incentives are being utilized." And when you look at them here, as I said, everything should be contextual, we have, as I opened up with. We have a 1.8 acre parcel. You know, 1.5, you know, is the factor determining the second unit. In actuality here, we're looking at, using that 1.5 factor, we don't get close to it. It's really more like a 1.12. We're not abusing, lack of a better word, we're corrupting, maybe. You know, we're not seeking the, any type of accommodation on green space. We're enhancing landscaping. We're not looking for added coverage of building. Everything is focused in on this one point to get to that second unit, which is quite interesting, because when we look at the character of the area, we're going to think, finally get to the point where we'd like to take you through an analysis of what was presented. You know, in terms of, and you've come back, this, I know it was mentioned yesterday, Ms. Alvin, you kind of opened the door last meeting when you said to the opponents, "Well, tell us what the neighborhood, you know, area wants." Well, obviously, you put it in the hands of someone who doesn't like the project, and she's free not to like the project. And everything is characterized a certain way. Okay? So it's not, it didn't shock me that this came back the way it came back, because you basically said, "Here's what I want you to see." And I think everybody in the area, not that you want to say, "Let's see what they have to say," and you ask the person who's an opponent. So that's fine. But the point I'm trying to make here is that we have empirical information, okay, about what this character of this area is about, about who could really do what in their property, and what they are doing now. So you can have a chart here, we want to take you through, that gives you proper context about this area.
Okay, so we've been, because we've been beating around the bush, as Katie just pointed out, so let's go.
Do you want to do this now, or do you want to talk about this comment?
Get to the meat.
I remember when you had ended this session. How old were you then? 22?
You have one of these?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nope.
Here. And just describe to them what you did. Just describe what you did, generally, while they pass this out.
So I have taken, and I've read all the stuff from the neighbors that was submitted to you. I have a lot to address regarding that, but I will take you into the first matter first, since there's a lot to cover. There was an attachment that was submitted with the potential precedence or the potential densities that could be allowed in the area if this one was to go through. We have researched every single property on that list. We have downloaded the GIS maps for every single property on that list. We have researched wetlands, onsite wetlands, offsite wetlands, ponds, setbacks, green space. We did all the history, and we have surmised on this table before you that there's only four potential properties. There was a calculation error, where the person who gave you this suggested that 39 and 18, 39 on Calhoun and 18 on neighboring streets, so a total of 57. When she multiplied the factor, she had a decimal, and she rounded up rather than... When she multiplied the factor, she had a decimal and she rounded up rather than rounding down. You can't add a full house if you get a .2 or .3 or .4. So, we had corrected that figure to 40, which is 28 and 12 totaling 40. However, ironically, on the tax cards that were submitted by both the person that submitted this and by us, there is a differential in property classifications. Some of the properties are classed 101. 101 means single-family residence. Others are classified as 107. 107, it says multi-dwellings. What that means is that some of them already have cottages with full kitchens in them that may or may not be rented. So, they already have grandfathered second units without the need of an HO zone. We have submitted addresses in a letter that contain those addresses, and many of them that she submitted on her list actually have that second unit dwelling inclusive in their tax cards. So, on that list, there are four houses that could meet setbacks, wetlands restrictions, and these are based on age only. I would like to submit pictures of those four houses, and those are 44 Calhoun, 75 Calhoun, 52 Upland, and 6 Hobart. 75 Calhoun ironically has a gate and a fence, so we could not photograph the front, but it does enter from Weaver Street, I believe, or fronts Weaver Street. We didn't have any access to... The purpose of this is to show the architecture of the four.
Go ahead, you can keep going while I'm passing them. We'll pass them down. Just give them to us, and we can figure it out.
How many houses, actually? Because they do it this...
On this one, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 on this list, but we actually have more on ours. I don't know if you want me to go through this entire spreadsheet, or if it makes sense to you guys.
Just give me an example, so I know I've got it. So, current conditions existing already, you said, actually have two units.
So, yes, so if you look...
So, if you look down there, it's 44 Calhoun, no, that has two units would be 38 Calhoun.
38, 45, 56, 65.
Got it.
59 Upland.
Got it, okay. I understand how to read it now.
And on the tax card, it means that they're, whatever, they're detached cottage, guest house has a kitchen in it, so it qualified for 107 property status of multi-dwellings.
Got it. Now, the one thing is, just to say this to you, when you look at this, they would have to come in for a subdivision, the next column over. If you have three acres, we would try to give you, get 15% open space from you on a subdivision, so you actually would not have enough land to do three lots. Okay? So, we would push hard on one like this. We'll do it on a subdivision that's already done, like the one we did earlier tonight. I don't know if you heard it. They actually had those lots already on a 1925 map. But if you've never had the subdivision before, we would ask for the open space. So, if it's...
Ironically, a lot of those already have pool house, tennis court, guest house.
But if they tore everything down and they came in for a subdivision...
Correct.
We wouldn't let them have three lots out of 3.18. Just saying.
Right, that's the one parcel. I would agree.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just like letting you know, just so everybody understands.
That's just the one she's referring to, the 3.18.
Well, it's the first one I saw.
37, right.
Yeah, that's the only one.
Yeah.
Two acres, usually two lots, you're more, if it's only a two lot subdivision, you'll, just in the application you saw earlier, you'll...
It was on a 1925 map, though, so that subdivision actually existed at one point, and that was one of the other reasons that the commission didn't withhold it. But go ahead.
All right. It's a real...
It's a technical point that you and I know what we're talking about.
Well, yeah, we know what we're talking about.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Perry.
And I've disseminated the photographs of 44 Calhoun, 75 Calhoun, not 75, 52 Upland and 6 Hobarts' architecture. Should any application on an HO, those are the ones that would come before you. They would have to meet, you know, the regulations for historic integrity and qualify under the regulations. So, there was discussion about setting a precedence for 57. That was an error in calculation, but besides that, the majority of those don't meet the requirements because of wetlands, onsite, onsite, lot size, setbacks, topography, and all of that. Of those four also, I can say that, you know, they're not engineered, so who knows whether they would also qualify with septic drainage and all of that that was required today. Okay, I'm going to read some excerpts that I had taken out from the neighbors' letters in and some misconceptions. 18 Calhoun wrote that the additional, firstly, additional structure in this proposed location dramatically alters the street scrape and negatively impacts the historic nature of Calhoun Drive. If even a fraction of the historic homes on Calhoun Drive are developed in this allowable manner and are relieved from the setback regulations. 45 Calhoun Drive wrote, the tear-down is clearly preferable because of completely inappropriate and unacceptable location proposed. 52 Upland wrote, we prefer to protect the old houses and the 1 acre zoning. The historic overlay provision as it exists potentially disrupts this. It's ironic that it says that we prefer to protect the old houses, because this essentially is the antithesis of that. But the wording of the location and relief from setback regulations, we are not asking for any relief from setback regulations. An 8,000 square foot house could go right, in fact, we could take the 6,000 square foot house that we presented the very first time, blow that up to 2,000, build it, we have our wetlands permit, and we can put a guest house cottage of 1,200 square foot in the very back. The front is the ideal location for building on this, on this location because of the slope of the hill totally separating the property. If you build in the front, you have a walkout from the front, you have a walkout from the back. If you build in the back, you've alienated the front. So, it's not a viable option for a new 10,000 square foot house to go way in the back. It's just not going to happen. And I think the recurring thing from these neighbors is that the front is off limits for building. It's not off limits to building, according to the regulation. The misconception on the Turner Drive lot. We had purchased a completely separate property on the Turner Drive. This was a separate transaction. It was a separate purchase. It is not related to the house itself. This was subdivided way back when. Ironically, there is a map that we submitted to you guys from the Historical Society that historically, with Park Hill Company, even with Ravensky, never had access to Turner Drive, never had that parcel. So, and I can show you that map. I can introduce this map. This is Turner Drive here. This is the lot that they keep referring to. This is Park Hill Company. It never had that lot. This was a separate transaction. Historically, it never encompassed in it. So, I'd like to, I will put that into the record.
Give it to Katie.
18 Calhoun said, there are 22 homes on Calhoun, 11 of which, excluding Calhoun, are historic, and I fear that the approval of this application will set a precedence for the subdivision. I gave you the Excel sheet that states which ones could or couldn't without any real historic information on the property itself, which is four, not 57, not 22, not 11. And again, that assumes that every old house has a historical importance, not mentioning their history or significance. Five of which on that list already have separate second units on their property. This exists, it can be seen from the road, many of them are on the side, some of them are in the front. I know the second unit for 59 Upland is right at the intersection. So, it exists in the community today, and many of them are grandparents.
Excuse me, are any of them the size of your proposed dwelling?
Well, actually, it's interesting that you say that, because I have some background. But I also submitted to you a planning application that was submitted to you guys in 2015. It's 1,000 feet away from the subject property at 137 Valley Drive, in which you approved the relocation of multiple structures on a 1 acre property and an expansion of a cottage house above 4,300 square feet. And that's much larger than ours today. And that was supposed to get an HO zone.
Are there any on Calhoun Drive that are larger?
I have one that is almost 3,000 square feet.
So, the answer's no?
We're at 3,400, they're almost at 3,000, so it's about a 400 square foot differential. But the most recent HO-proposed cottage relocation application to you was 4,300 square feet, 1,000 feet from us, on the corner of Glenville and Valley Drive. That one also...
That's a big difference. Glenville and Valley Drive is not, is a different location.
It's a different, you're very far away. Calhoun Drive is well beyond where Valley begins off of Glenville Road.
We mapped it, it's almost 1,000 feet. So, I don't know if you want to say 500 square feet.
To the entrance, but it's not on Calhoun Drive, and it's not really near Calhoun Drive, I would say. But the B that is a, go ahead.
And, I mean, it's shown on the map that even the neighbors submitted. They didn't bubble it, but it's right outside the parameters that they submitted. And that one was found based on the Dutch colonial architecture itself, not about, you know, the person or anything like that, but the architecture itself. I think that we've submitted from the Greenwich Historical Society, mentioning, you know, Park Hill demonstrates the chief Tudor revival attributes with its asymmetrical composition. The long horizontally masked facade and series of overlapping intersection gables create characteristic interest and variety of shape and line. The interplay of roof lines, which consistently change in height, continue with double pitched roof, first story shed roof, and appear to the right side of the main entrance. A roof covering of multicolored slate enhances the mix of textures created by the juxtaposition of smooth stucco, rough-cut stone, decorative half-timbering walls and gable ends. The masonry window and door surrounds, designed in patterns of brick composed of brick headers, short-end stretchers, make a decorative contrast with the stucco walls. At the dramatic front entrance, a wooden window grate with turned grill work set into the roof peak underscores the romantic medieval effect. A one-story wing crowned by a steeply pitched roof, a ceramic cat sits on the peak, is lit from the south by a pair of glass doors set under a round arch windows. The wing, just one room in width and one story high, creates a more intimate space with larger house. Virtually all of the detailing of the original house is intact. This was by the Greenwich Historical Society. I did not write this. This has to do with the architecture, not just a cat. Moreover, it was interesting, because you guys have a little bit different than I've been in other commissions, and I've served on commissions as well, but in other commissions, we don't do a briefing meeting that you guys do. So, you know, I went to this briefing meeting that you guys had yesterday, and the Times at 4:00, I hear, well, you know, okay, it has architecture, but it doesn't have a story to a person. So, that's the reason I dug up the story to the person. So, now, we say, okay, it has a story to the person, but it doesn't have the architecture. We're trying to, you know...
It's something that, when I was, I first got out of the commission, I noticed a lot. What happens is, when a group of people is uncomfortable with something, they keep asking different types of questions, because they're trying to get their brains around something. And I could never figure out how we would ask an applicant, blah, 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 and they'd come back and we'd go, oh, what about this? What you're getting is people just trying to get their brains around it. And I think we're making a genuine effort to get our brains around it, even if we sound a little grouchy sometimes. Not really, right, Mr. Tessie? We're never grouchy, no? Okay, go ahead.
So, I mean, I've provided as much information as I can on the architecture. Old Greenwich Historical Society, HTC thinks it's significant in architecture. I've submitted to the record, which a lot of people have not seen, because I guess it wasn't, you know, circulated, which is the book, and I have more copies to give you. There was, and yesterday at a briefing, it was mentioned, well, you've got one book written on this guy, probably a friend, and I believe it was mentioned, and I have, actually, and I will submit that as well. That, you know, Mr. Ravensky, besides being a brilliant mind, he financed some of the most successful beginnings, including, by the way, Woolworth, which was here in the avenue during his time here in Greenwich. He also...
Fortunately, most of us are old enough to remember that.
Yeah. And basically...
Except you, except Nick, who's a baby.
I went to Woolworth here, too.
Oh, good. I'm glad you're old enough. Okay, go ahead.
There were 54 books on this guy, 18 reports written on him, eight journals, 38 articles, 20 newspapers, 19 unpublished writings by his family members, so this, all the 58 books were not by family members, four encyclopedia written on him, and hundreds of stuff in the Redwood Library published by him. This guy is not a guy who, you know, was just around, but, you know, maybe he wasn't as famous for his name to get out there, but he certainly started a difference, especially here in Greenwich, as well as through the country. He established the first treasury note. I think that speaks volumes. He created with his team the first shell for the first hydrogen bomb, and it was an Iwetola to witness it. I mean, a lot of history is written with his dedication to it. So, I'd like to also submit here, this was one of the cottages that is a two-story. I would say it looks pretty much like a house. This is one of the second units that one of the neighbors has. A lot of the tax cards have the images of them, and a lot of...
Do you know what address that is? And we'll put it into the record.
That one is 65, I believe.
If you just write the, if you hand it to me, I'll put the address on it, and I'll send it down to Katie to put into the record. And this is the second unit on that property?
Yes.
Guest cottage.
Ironically, not on her list is 2 Calhoun. 2 Calhoun has two full houses. One is like a ranch-style house, but it is a house-looking thing. It's not a cottage, it's not a accessory, it is a ranch house.
Just ask you a question while you're going through this. In your discussions with the neighbors, have you had any back and forth in terms of what their thoughts are, in terms of something that they think would be additive to the neighborhood? to the neighborhood in terms of size, whether it be 1,000 square feet or 1,500 square feet, and give you the latitude to add square footage to the main house?
I was at the annual meeting, and I was at a subsequent board meeting, and we were there to answer any kind of discussions. Nobody really wanted to open discussions on that. Ironically, at the annual meeting, it was sort of brought up why, you know, the people who have a rental or who have a second unit don't get assessed twice in fees. So that question did come up in that regards. But none of them actually spoke with me in parameters of the application.
Yeah, it just seems to me that there is a sort of matter of degree here, which isn't easily quantified. But there might be a solution, short of trying to push for a decision. If you and Mr. Tessie had dialogue, you know, with the neighborhood association, just in terms of what-
Well, I'm wondering if we could get Ms. Perry, it was when Ms. Perry's finished, you've still got a ways to go, you've got a while to go on your presentation? Because you're still turning pages. I don't want to interrupt you, but then we can sort of get public comment on the proposal. I think that's what Dave is looking for.
Just to answer, Mr. Hartman, we actually tried to be responsive-
To the neighbors.
In this application.
And to us.
To you and the neighbors in this application. Getting back to the building, and I can't remember now who said, maybe Mr. Low, maybe it was someone else. In terms of the size of this building, oh, you asked the question, right. What we tried to do is get this building to actually read like a building that's more like 2,500 square feet, in the sense, as Nick got into it earlier, that the roof line, the second floor, we have a roof line. We actually have some, you have some tray ceilings, some, what do you call them? I call it tray ceilings, but going all the way through. So what we tried to do is basically have it read as a one-and-a-half-story building. And we're not far off, as Nick pointed out, really having that not counted at all, which actually gets us down to about 2,200 square feet. But we tried to have some intellectual integrity and thought we could just talk it out and say, look, it's profiles about 2,500 square feet because we wouldn't have to count in terms of floor area that attic area if we just knocked off a couple hundred square feet, which you could make up on the first floor. So, but I don't know if size really, you know, where size, you know, what point does size matter as much? If the magic is 3,000 square feet, because as well, no, no, under our regulations, certain things count, certain things don't, but you still have bulk. So we tried to do it on a profile basis, as I said earlier, in terms of how it would read under our regulations if one looked at it and assumed that the attic wasn't counting.
Well, one of the things you're kind of getting at is something we've been talking about before. And we don't want to get away from this park-like setting. It's a, it's a, the gently sloping site, and the hill, and it's called Hill Park, is a, is a nice way of referring to the property because it's on a hill. And the hill is a feature of it. The landscape is a feature of this HO that we are interested in seeing as, continued as a feature. So by putting something in front of it, it gives you opportunities and also to highlight it and also create some constraints about how you're able to see it. But the property is very important to us, along with what we're talking about, the architecture. But the architecture is important to talk about, but I don't want you to lose sight about the property as a whole as well. So one of the things that I think that's helped is this new driveway configuration and kind of giving you the feeling that this is some kind of continuous landscape that you're going through. That's very good. And you've, you've set this, you've tried to set the building a little bit more into the landscape as opposed to it coming out of the landscape. And the roof lines help also mitigate that, as you were saying. And the devil's in the details, and I think that you need to flush that a little bit more. Because the more it looks more, more of the feeling of, of a gatehouse, a traditional gatehouse, the less it will look like a contemporary house.
In fact, you know, one of the, oh, I'm sorry. In fact, one of the regulations, or one of the sites here, 6109 C10, is that new additions shall not destroy, destroy matters, da-da-da, and spatial relationships that characterize the property. And I think that captures a little bit of what Mr. Levy's getting at.
No, you mentioned it earlier, I think. I think you did, about the spatial, somebody did, spatial relationships, Mr. Low did. And he's right. They're all right. This should, this, we're trying to get to the point of an integrated, with an integrated estate setting. That's, that was what we were, again, reading into what, what the direction was we were to go in.
How are you doing with your presentation? Are you done, or you?
Well, I mean, I think I can continue by, you know, these were already submitted into the record, which is the photos of the second units. So, I mean, you could flip through the picture on the tax card of the second unit versus the main house.
Why don't we do this as a plan? Let's, I'd like to hear from the public, and then I'd like to have, we've heard from the alternates, very clear opinions from the alternates. And then I'd like to ask the regular members to kind of discuss the HO. Because as you say, you've been working on this a lot, and to have everybody give you a little bit of feedback. But let's hear from the public first so we can integrate that feedback. You guys happy where you're sitting? We don't care. You okay?
Marguerite, are we going to sort of acknowledge that, you know, we've got extensive written material, which summarizes?
Yes, that we've, we've got, so, yeah, we're gonna, Andy's in charge of supervising the speaking of the public this evening, along with, are there a lot of people who want to speak? If you could just raise your hand. Okay, so two, three. And you know what the rules are, guys? Keep it short, keep it snappy, don't repeat yourselves. And Andy is going to be the hard guy because I beat somebody else up earlier tonight, so it's his turn.
Piling on doesn't help the situation. And so you've done a, you know, not to cut you off, but you've done a petition, you've done all this stuff. So if you have new information, because this isn't, we've heard you the last time, please try to keep it succinct and to new ideas.
If you think we forgot, you can tell us. Yes, ma'am. Okay, first one with our hand up was you. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so Andy's gonna, do you want to? Three minute? Does that work for you?
Oh, I'll talk fast? Okay.
You don't have to talk fa, see how you do, and if you're almost done and whatever, but it's just that the last time, we went two hours or something. I know you guys want to go home, too.
Absolutely. My name is Jenny Matthews. My husband Jim and I live at 18 Calhoun Drive. I'd like to thank the commission for the work you do on behalf of the town and for your diligence in considering this application. I just want to say quickly, Jim and I love old houses. We have owned and renovated four historic properties over our 30-year marriage. Our home at 18 Calhoun Drive is a 26-year-old Tudor. We've spent the past 20 years painstakingly restoring it, top to bottom, inside and out. I have to say, though, when we came here 20 years ago, it wasn't just the house that kind of made us fall in love with Calhoun Drive, it was the character of the street. It's quiet lane, it's outside of town. There are historic houses that are graciously situated on large pieces of property. My neighbors have big yards, they have gardens, there are swing sets. It's kind of a throwback. It's what we loved then, it's what we love now. So it's not really surprising. I am, the historic overlay regulation resonates with me. I feel like it's a really thoughtful way to make historic homes work for modern families. I completely appreciate the spirit of the regulation, but I also really object to this particular application for a number of reasons. First, this application, in my mind, is not at all about preservation. It's about building and selling two homes where there should be one. The applicants have identified a loophole somehow within this regulation that's allowing them to essentially subdivide the property. The proposed second structure, as we've talked about, is 32, 3,500 square feet, my understanding was 35. I don't know in what world that 3,500 square feet is a carriage house. I don't know who could look at a 3,500-square-foot house, what it actually looks like, and say that it's secondary in size or nature. I know there's some mention of other carriage homes that might exist on our association. I asked the commission to consider what those are and what the sizes of those properties are. We have some very large properties with historic homes within the Calhoun Drive Association. So let's call this second, this second structure actually what it is. It's a principal structure. It is a second house that's going to be jammed in between two existing homes. This applicant is really working hard to focus on the historic value of 21 Calhoun Drive. But let's, let's be clear, there are 11 other historic homes on Calhoun Drive. 75 Calhoun Drive was built in 1900. Others were built in as early as 1909, 1910, in 1910, 1911. And I am absolutely certain, now for a little bit of research, we would find compelling stories and charming monikers associated with all of these historic homes. Our house actually is part of a cluster of homes at Calhoun and Upland Drive that were built around the, that were built around the golf course and the housing project. Oh, God, that's killing me. It built around the golf course, okay, built around the golf course and the housing development that was associated with the Edgewood Inn, which was financed by Nathaniel Witherall. This is a historic neighborhood. It is not just about 21 Calhoun Drive. 21 Calhoun Drive is not more important than 7, or 21, or 56. And it's certainly not more important than all of these historic homes together that really create the essence of our neighborhood. By approving this application, the commission is valuing one historic home over all of our homes and our historic street. Allowing two homes to be built on 1.8 acres is not in keeping with the grace of this neighborhood. It flies in the face of early 20th-century architects and their vision for Calhoun Drive. It compromises our streetscape, and it spoils the heart of our association. Second, I fear, this is really important, I hope that doesn't ring, I fear that granting approval- Okay. I fear that granting approval of this application will set a precedent of using HO as a tool for a property subdivision that will completely and permanently alter the complexion of Calhoun Drive. Just to orient you quickly on this, on the map, is this going to work? On the map, the black delineates the boundaries of the association, the red are the streets. The main artery, of course, is Calhoun Drive that essentially runs from Glenville, oh, gosh, I'm disoriented, shoot. From, Calhoun runs from Glenville down to Weaver. This is Upland, Hobart, Turner, and Angus. The pink is 21 Calhoun, and 12 Turner is the associated property we've been talking about a little bit. The yellow houses are, represent the 17 historic homes in our neighborhood, in our association. But let's just, let's just for ease and time, focus on, focus on Calhoun Drive. There are 22 homes on Calhoun Drive, 12 of which are historic. If we take 21 out of the conversation, we're left with 11 historic homes. And as you can, as you can see from the map, these are large properties. And in fact, the average acreage of these 11 historic homes is 1.98 acres. So the average acreage of these 11 historic homes, 1.98 acres. Remember, we're talking about the applicant putting two homes on 1.8 acres. So totally out of sync with the neighborhood. But the critical question here is, if the 21 Calhoun Drive application is approved, what is to stop other developers from buying up other large-lot historic homes and exploiting HO to execute de facto subdivisions, just like this applicant's trying to do? What is going to stop future developers from completely eroding our one-acre zoning? And that question, it goes beyond our association. How, once this precedent is set, how is it going to affect our other beautiful historic streets in our town? I'm going to very bravely bring up the density table that the applicant referred to. First, I want to say, I don't believe I misrepresented anything. If I did, I, obviously, clearly, that wasn't my intention. But basically, this table illustrates the calculation of the potential number of structures on Calhoun. Worst-case scenario, we know that. But I think it's important that our understanding is, because this is one-acre zoning, the HO regulation says a property can multiply the acreage by 1.5 to determine the number of structures allowed. And furthermore, any fraction can be rounded up. So quickly, the Rosson 7 Calhoun, 2.47 acres, times 1.5, rounded up, could suggest they could have four units on their property. They may already have a secondary structure. We have 1.54 acres, times 1.5, rounded up, three structures. I have a pond in my backyard. Maybe I only can put in one structure. But applying for the historic overlay regulation, there are incentives. So we don't have to worry about setbacks as much. There are leniencies that would come into play here. And potentially, I mean, if you're looking at all these 11, these 11 historic homes on Calhoun, worst-case scenario, 39, you're talking about 39 units. Obviously, these are, it's not going to be 39 units. But the point is, if three of these houses apply for historic overlay regulation, four of these houses apply for historic regulation, and this precedent is set, we suddenly have a pretty densely populated or densely constructed neighborhood. Once historic overlay designation is granted, this leaves the door open for future development merely by applying for site plan and special permits. It will make it difficult for future PMZ commissions to deny if properties are developed one by one using this precedent. We are at the precipice of a slippery slope. Furthermore, since these properties might be shared through some form of land condominiums, these new homes might be resided in by additional families and not used as character guest houses. This would create significant and untenable number of cars and traffic on our small lanes. If even a fraction of these historic homes on Calhoun Drive are developed in this allowable manner, the entire complexion of the drive, Calhoun Drive, will be changed, and our prized one-acre zoning will be eviscerated. The reality is that even this one allowance cheapens our neighborhood. And if the regulation continues to be exploited by other developers, Calhoun Drive becomes Millbank. Millbank is a lovely in-town street, but it's densely developed. We didn't buy houses on Millbank. We bought houses that were out of town on a quiet lane with historic homes and large pieces of property. Our bylaws do not offer, our association bylaws do not include guidelines regarding architecture, land use, or beautification. Our neighborhood, our neighborhood relies on Greenwich zoning laws to maintain its character and its value. Every one of our neighbors paid for one-acre zoning, and your vote tonight could actually compromise compromise that investment. I ask this commission to apply the HO regulation prudently and deny this application. Offer it to residents who are genuinely utilizing the allowances to complement and enhance their historic home. Support situations that actually protect community character and property values as well as architectural heritage, just as the regulation mandates. This application muddies the waters. Its intentions are disingenuous. It negatively impacts the character of a beautiful and historic neighborhood, and it sets a precedent that beckons developers for all the wrong reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, before you go, I just, what would you like to see there?
You know, I understand that this is not my property. This is the Perry's property.
Yeah.
However, it, I, we really spoke to our neighbors. I mean, I would imagine that you see that it's not easy to get people to engage. Neighbors don't care. Everybody's busy. We're all pulling our kids home from college today, boarding school. I mean, it's a mess, but people are showing up because we really care...
I'm amazed. I was not expecting you guys to...
We really care about this neighborhood. And this, and we don't want to lose these big properties. We don't want it to be all of these houses, and really to lose our one-acre zoning. This regulation really, I see it as having a lot of value. I think this is the wrong application. There are going to be two homeowners. This is going to be two houses on one property. I don't ever want to see that.
Mrs. Matthews, you're undoubtedly aware of the HO process.
I am, a bit, not as much probably as everyone else in the room.
There's a significant amount of information that is required upfront even to consider this. So, and part of that is actually proving the historic nature of the house. Why is it a unique house? Why is it worth saving? It's interesting to me because actually, there is a lot of information about this house beyond what we usually get. Also, you asked, how does this stop? We're the people who stop. It comes to us and winds up on our desk. We have denied HOs in the past, and it's really got to be up to snuff, and we're the people who have that control.
And HDC. I mean...
Right.
Yeah.
So, I understand your concerns, but actually also understand that actually, if somebody else wants to do it on the street, we'll be back here again. Okay? And it's case by case. Somebody's coming in, they have the parameters, they possibly could do it. Again, it's going to come back here, and we look at it on the same merits. If it's just an old house, like Mr. Lowe had talked about, you know, maybe it's really not worth saving, and maybe it's just an old house.
I appreciate that, Mr. McCray, but the fact that a debutante had a party in this house should not change my zoning. I can't appreciate that.
You've been saving that line, haven't you?
I really haven't.
I would have saved that line.
I don't, first of all, I think that there's, you know, this has piqued my interest. I think there's probably a lot of interesting stories here, and that's what your work is about, right? It's about saving these old historic houses. But let's be real, this is directly affecting the value of our homes. Again, I don't care who's in their ballroom. I don't know if that's relevant to any of you, but that's not relevant to me. That's not relevant to my neighbors. And in terms of, you're right, I understand, and I'm grateful that the P&amp;Z is here to hear these historic overlay applications, but there are going to be P&amp;Z commissions, you know, beyond your tenure. And when these precedents are set and compromises are made, we're all at risk. So I'm asking you, someone has said you're stewards, and you are stewards of this regulation. I ask that you use it prudently.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to speak next? Yes, ma'am. Okay, I'm going to try the timer again, but don't feel, you know...
Okay, I'll do my best.
Andy was doing the tough talk, so. I did on that other applicant.
But it didn't work.
Yeah, I think we just, you guys are not good at enforcing the timer, so I'm...
But then I get yelled at afterwards for letting people go on until 3 o'clock in the morning.
And then I look like the bad guy.
Okay, so, with all that, try to be brief.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, woman, and commission members. So my name is Stephanie Milligan, and I live at 4 Angus Lane. So when you saw me last time, I was a board member on the Calhoun Drive Association. Since then, I've become the president of the Calhoun Drive Association. But the one thing I want to put in perspective in terms of the association itself, there's a wonderful spirit of our association. We get to know the neighbors because we have a directory when we move in. There's a feeling of a real neighborhood because there's just a few lanes that actually are somewhat enclosed and separate from Glenville Road, from Valley Drive, it's Weaver Street, and it creates a lovely feel of seclusion. The association itself does not coordinate anything else than the maintenance of the roads, and that's a point to Ms. Perry in the sense that the association is not there to address any type of petition, any types of architectural issues. That was mentioned by Mrs. Matthews. What we're here for is to manage the roads. So moving on to the topic of the petition, that was organized by the residents. Everyone actually decided that it was an important topic, so a number of residents worked on the petition, others put their hands up to knock on everyone's door, and you saw the results. Calhoun Drive, 100% return in terms of the petitions coming back, and 100% of just one house. And what we're trying to say with that, also with obviously Angus Lane and Upland, if you take all the numbers, we get to 85 if you take that wider neighborhood. We could also include the associate members. So, you know, we could keep on going, and we would have the same answer because we feel that we are part of a very special neighborhood. And Mr. Levy, you asked, what would we like to see? That was the question that comes. We want to see one house. It could be the historical house, it would be wonderful to keep it, but we don't want a second house at the bottom of the hill, which does not fit with the style. It's far too modern versus the original house, and it doesn't fit in terms of size. It's not a carriage house. If you want to keep the property as a historical property, the secondary house has to fit with that concept of historical definition, which is basically a smaller property. So if they want to put something smaller, it would sit better in the back historically like carriage houses usually do. But they could put something much smaller in the front, and I don't think people would be shocked. If they decide to take the house down, we can have a 10,000-square-foot house right at the bottom. That argument's been going tonight, saying, well, you would have that house at the bottom of the hill. Doesn't matter. Look at 29 Calhoun, I think it's 29, it's 29 Calhoun Drive. And if I may, Mr. and Mrs. Perry, I'm going to use your chart. If you look right here in the back, 29 Calhoun, brand-new house, it's just exactly 50 feet from the setback. We don't have an issue with those houses going up. It is one big house that has a huge part of lawn in the back. And I was mentioning earlier, and I thought that Mr. John Tessie was a bit disingenuous, you cannot ask to have a relief because you have 1.8 acre. We all have big properties with a house in one corner and huge lawns. We could all go and say, well, you know, you're starting with 21 Calhoun, within 15 years, all the properties will have been divided, not just the historical one, and the neighborhood will be gone. So we have to, I say we, you as a commission really have to think about that. Valley Drive is not part of the Calhoun Drive Association, it's a different type of neighborhood. And as was mentioned earlier, Millbank and lots of other neighborhoods are lovely, but they are just different neighborhoods from that perspective. And in terms of the petition, let me just backtrack. Mr. Tessie also mentioned that it was driven by one person who was unhappy. No, it wasn't. It's actually a reflection of a lot of effort by all the residents to give you a perspective on how we feel towards the HO in relation to our neighborhood. We would not be arrogant enough to say it's something that needs to change for all of Greenwich. We're just saying in terms of our neighborhood, it's something that is important to us, and we hope that you will take it into consideration because it really reflects how we all feel. And it's interesting, we, when my husband and I moved in three years ago, there was 14 other families who moved in at the same time. So a lot of the families that had lived in the neighborhood, their kids had grown up, they moved away, and they sold their houses. The new families are families with young kids, they're planning on being there for 20 years, 25 years, like we are. And we bought into a neighborhood that we feel reflects what we wanted, which is a single-family house with big lawns, and again, the leafy environment. So I think in terms of, you know, conclusion, and I think it was mentioned by Mr. Lowe earlier today, is Greenwich is a beautiful town defined by the distinct nature of its many, many neighborhoods that coexist. And we live in a neighborhood that is special, that has character, and it is 70 houses that really create that low-secluded neighborhood, and actually allowing 21 Calhoun to build two houses, two distinct houses, not complementary to each other, would destroy the spirit of the neighborhood. So I do hope you will take that into consideration in your deliberations. Thank you very much.
Something, and I've been trying to look it up just to check, and I haven't been able to. 137 Weaver is in the 1700s, that's not a typo. I couldn't find it in any of the stuff, I hadn't noticed that. So that house is from the 1700s?
It's a tiny, tiny house. It's just so quaint. It's just tiny.
Yeah. Okay. No, but I just had not, it just registered tonight when I was looking at that.
And it's basically towards...
I tried to find it online, and I couldn't, and I was trying to, it wasn't in the material. Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am, and congratulations on being president. You can come on P&amp;Z after then.
Well, actually, I've been enjoying it.
Yes, sir.
Hi there, I'm Jim Matthews, and I'll try to be additive. Thank you for all of your time and diligence on this matter. I just wanted to address three issues, all of which I think are incremental. The first is a procedural one with regard to HDC and the approval of this. The question was asked, I believe, by you, Madam Chair, Alvin, last time, of why we weren't, the neighborhood, the opposers, were not involved in the HDC discussion. We weren't noticed. And what I figured out is we didn't miss it in our mail. It's not part of their procedures to notice the neighbors, which I think is a flaw because what happens is these things seem to pick up some momentum.
They don't agree to us. They don't make a decision.
But they make a recommendation. But we could look at that. That's an easy thing to address. I mean, we could look at the, we've actually been trying to figure out how to improve the notification, so we'll look at that.
Yeah, it just, it seemed, we were asked the question as to why we were asleep at the switch, and it wasn't until we got the notice of P&amp;Z, and the issue is that...
And I didn't know that. I learned something, and I move forward.
And it's, I'm really delighted to hear that you're looking at this in context of an entire property as opposed to my perception of HDC as they have, their job is, they have tunnel vision, they're focused on preserving a structure.
Dennis got us started thinking about that very recently, his contribution for the year.
And I think, by the way, the context here, and I don't want to get on a tangent, is important because Mr. Tessie talked about that. The context, while 12 Turner is technically a separate property, and I don't know what Ravinsky had going on back in the day, or whether he had that property, I don't really care, as my wife said, but the Flemings who owned it right before this, that was their tennis court, and that was the septic system for this property. So it was one 2.9-acre estate, which the builder had the ability to divide into two homes, and they carved that one off legally, and now are trying to jam in two homes on the remaining 1.8 acres. Second issue is the likelihood of two separate owners of these homes. My understanding is that P&amp;Z cannot restrict the applicant from having this land be shared among two separate owners, so that does open the door for some sort of condominium-type ownership of the land with two separate owners of homes. At the last meeting, we heard...
If we approve the HO.
If you approve the HO, I'm assuming all that. At the last meeting, we heard these fanciful narratives about, you know, single owners. One was a Russian who needed the carriage house for the security detail, the other was a car collector who needed the structure of cars. I find it more telling, however, that the applicant originally started with 6,000 feet, has now carved it back to 3,500 feet in response, but I don't see any volunteering to be a single owner and not having a condominium structure. So to me, the facts are, this is open to be a blatant subdevelopment and a subdivision of, you know, 1-point acres, which Jenny pointed out, the historic homes average 1.98 acres per home. So this will be much more dense. And the problem is, is the way this has evolved is we're now, as residents, stuck in the middle because it's now 3,500 feet, which many would argue is too big for a carriage house. But what's really happening here is in the subdivision, we're going to be stuck with a 3,500-square-foot home, which is subscale and too small to garner an appropriate value on our street. So they're going to, you know, erode the property values of everyone else by being more dense in what is a small primary structure home. So the last, the last piece is, I think, and when you look at historical overlay applications, this one strikes me as atypical and one on which the commission should cast a jaundiced eye. This is not a situation where you're renovating an existing secondary structure. It's a whole new structure. They're tearing down the existing second structure, which is nowhere near this. This isn't in a mixed-use zone like where Greenwich Academy and Second Congregational Church got approvals. This is plain vanilla RA1 zoning, and you've seen, you know, how sparsely populated it is. So I do fear Commissioner Lowe's concern that you're really being unwitting enablers of a subdivision of 2.9 acres down to 1.8, and then splitting that in half. And I think you're just undermining our one-acre zoning and opening up Pandora's Box, not just for Calhoun, but the whole town.
I just wanted to address that. The commission took a lot of heat when the Lockwood House got torn down in Old Greenwich, and very significant historic house. We spent a lot of time with Historic District Commission to come up with a process to try to stay historic homes. And this is what we have. And unfortunately, even this is not doing what it was intended to do.
Right.
And, and so we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, or between neighbor versus neighbor, where we are hearing the cries of the community, we just did the POCD, about keeping historic houses, keeping historic neighborhoods. But as everybody knows with the land values, and in renovating a whole historic house, you don't get the money out of it. And so the Lockwood House in the 1800s was scraped. And again, we're not, I'm not trying to discount the neighborhood. I just want you to understand that we, since I've been on the commission, this issue has come up at least six times where we've lost historic homes, significant, significant historic homes, and we have nothing to show for it. They're gone. And now we have new big houses because that's what the zoning permits, and the Historic District Commission, the Historic Society are saying, what are you doing? Well, we can't help you because this is our only tool. We can't give tactics on this. This is our only tool. So I understand the emotion that everybody has, and we're trying to strike a balance of saving the character of the town. And I just wanted to tell you kind of the impetus of this regulation. And it's not perfect, and it's not arbitrary. Each case is taken based on the record, and we spend a lot of time agonizing over these facts to try to make the best decision for the neighborhood and the town. So I just wanted to go on the record to put some context to this regulation.
Well said.
Absolutely. And I think everyone appreciates that. I mean, you have a very difficult job to do, and I know it shouldn't be open-mic night where Evan can decide what gets done on the property, so we really appreciate your diligence on this.
And we care.
It's clear.
We really do care, and we're not arbitrary.
Yeah, it's clear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? What, only two people? No, you said someone else was going to speak.
Is it useful that the other neighbors just that are here go on the record that they're here?
No, because we can see you, and we remember you from the other times, and we've got this big fat record, and we've got the petition. So that's why we said you add new thoughts if you've got something that you didn't...
It's not a new thought. It's simply to say, I'm Jeff Preble, 17 Calhoun Drive. I'm opposed to the applicant's proposal. And I'd also say that even with this turnout here tonight, I think, given the circumstances in the community and globally, you would expect even much more significant turnout.
Yep. Thank you very much, sir.
Would you say your name again?
Jeff Preble.
Okay, so is that it for the neighbors who want to speak? One more, sir. See if Andy can enforce his three minutes.
Enforce three minutes just against me?
Well...
I will be brief.
He thinks it's an easy job.
So am I. They're returning.
Okay. Oh, I had forgotten that. Okay, yes, sir.
For the record, Attorney Nicholas Viti.
Yep.
I'm a partner with the law firm of Kase Tush in Santa Gata with law offices at 1111 Summer Street in Stanford, Connecticut. And I'm here representing a number of neighbors in the immediate vicinity adjacent to the applicant's property. Again, I won't belabor comments already made. I think Commissioner Lowe, Commissioner Yaski, and the opponents that were here in the room today summed it up pretty well, as well as much that was said at the last public hearing back in January. But for all these points of opposition that were made, I will present that the applicant cannot satisfy the special permit standards of Section 6-17D of these zoning regulations, and also the complementary and secondary nature and standard of the HO regulations, which is 6-109D3. That's point one. Two others that may not be as popular with this commission... Two others that may not be as popular with this commission, but I make them as an attorney, and they focus more along a legal nature in regards to flaws in this application. And one of which I touched upon last time as well, but again, I would like to lay it out for the record and also put a couple exhibits into the record. As I stated at the initial public hearing, the application's change to the HO zone is not properly before you because the applicant cannot satisfy the most basic standard, and that is that the property, and property I'll put in quotations, and its contributing structure or structures must have been in existence prior to 1940 and to the present. It must have been used as it was historically. I know we had some back and forth the last time around on this certain provision and its intent and meaning, but I will maintain to this commission that the intent and meaning does not matter. The applicant tanks, takes the regulations as they exist and as are presently written. And pursuant to those regulations, you take the property as a whole. The property as a whole has been changed since 1940, most recently in 2019. And I will submit the lot line revision that was done--
I remember that.
I believe it was January 2019, but this is--
We were all here.
What's that?
We were all here.
Yep. Just for the record, I'd like to submit that map. I do have copies for everybody, but maybe just for timing, I'll submit them for the record if anyone's interested. Maybe Katie can pass them down. Also, an exhibit, the field card, and I don't know, I didn't see all the field cards that were presented into the record, but a field card for 12 Turner Drive, which was the lot that was subdivided.
Correct. Thank you. Do you think you could decide? Just--
So point, point number two is, is the property that is, the subject of this application is not the property that it was in 1940, and it has not stayed that property consistently to the present day. Despite the map that the applicant put in, there was a lot line revision done in 2019, and that significantly changed what that property was. Point number three, or actually just, I want to address one, one comment under that same subsection, subsection that Attorney Tessie had mentioned at the last public hearing, because he said that no properties would be available for HO overlay if Attorney Viti was correct under this proposition that I just laid out. But the availability of the HO district and properties under that is not the litmus, litmus test here before you. You take the regulations as they currently exist, on their face and as written. If they need revision, then they get revision. But right now, it's the whole of the property that must be considered. And the third point that I bring up, and this is the one that I kind of foreshadowed that would be not popular with this commission, but I lay it out for the record as well. It is my opinion, and I have support in Connecticut case law, that the HO regulations are illegal on their face under Connecticut law. Specifically, Section 6-109D3. 6-109D3 of those HO regulations states, "The commission may also modify setbacks and/or green area requirements." Those are, that's the exact verbiage in your regulations. I maintain, and I will submit a case to support that proposition, that the P&amp;Z cannot vary or modify its regulation requirements on a case-by-case basis on they say, as they say fit. This is a power that is reserved for the Zoning Board of Appeals by statute, and the HO regulations in this respect usurps the PCBA's statutory authority, and therefore the, the regulation is illegal on its face. And I will submit the appellate court case of McKenzie versus Planning and Zoning Commission of Monroe, which is cited at 146 Con App 406, 2013, sorry, which supports this very notion.
Even though this application's not asking for relief on those--
Even though, because, because an illegal application is an illegal application. If it's on its face illegal, that's it. And secondary point to that fact is, this application might not be before this commission if it wasn't for those specific verbiage that I just read off. If you remember, the original application that was filed before you went over the green space requirement, and it would have had this commission make a decision on a case-by-case basis as to what the green space requirement is. That's a power strictly given to the ZBA by statute. It violates the uniformity requirement and is illegal on its face.
Just, if I could ask you to expand on one little part of that. So yes, agreed, know all about McKenzie. But what's interesting about McKenzie is what they did in that case was they just decided that night that they were going to change the setback for the particular applicant. If you could speak to the issue of when you have a qualifier, which in this case is a historic overlay. So in other words, if you have some sort of qualifier, if you have a finding that there is a reason to do so, et cetera, which is the purpose statement of this section, how does that, in your mind, change the relationship to McKenzie?
It, it does not in this instance, because there's qualifiers and there are incentives in this regulation all throughout. But the one that I gave you, the one line where you can essentially on a case-by-case basis, pick the setback and pick the green space requirement, makes this directly on point to McKenzie.
Well, it does say in the, indeed, to provide incentives to protect historic resources. So there is a qualifier in there.
That's, that's a variance power.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm not trying to argue it right now, I'm just wanting to know if you have something to say about that since we're on the record.
What's the Hartford Sarah?
Oh, yeah.
The woman who teaches.
Not Helen, and not--
Yeah, the lady, the--
Bronin.
Sarah Bronin.
Yes. I'm familiar with Sarah.
Yeah.
And I know Luca as well.
Mm-hmm. Not where they came out, but okay.
I mean, it, it, just by--
We can ask the attorneys again, but, and we verify our regulation, but we worked this with our attorneys, and we got input, as you know, Sarah Bronin is very active, and Katie connected with her when we were working on our regulation, and she is an attorney as well.
I've, I've argued this matter under McKenzie before and actually been unsuccessful. I've been on the side of the commission. So I come from a personal experience as well, and that was on an appeal.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason I mention these qualifiers is the commission was just upheld on two decisions where they did waive because there was a qualifier.
We just won two cases in court on the same thing, on the same kind of topic.
At the Superior Court level?
Yep.
Okay.
On appeal.
Two for two.
Mr. Tessie was on the--
Mr. Tessie will be happy to tell you, but that's why we're saying to you, not how our read is, because we were challenged on two different ones, and-- Were they both appealed or just the one?
Both.
They were both. Both were appealed, and we won both.
One's pending, one was upheld. The one appeal was upheld, the other is pending.
I think if, if, if there were parameters which didn't give case-by-case discretion, for instance, if there were, you can modify the setbacks up to X degree, it differs very much than just giving you outright authority, which is essentially what you have.
Okay.
And in sum, that's basically all I have for you tonight. And for all of those reasons, I respectfully request that you deny both of the applicant's applications.
Okay. Mr. Tessie, don't stand up yet, okay? If I could just--
Another public question.
Oh, yes, you may, yeah.
I wasn't here last time.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Hello. Hi, thank you so much for being here, and it's very late. I'm going to be very quick. I'll be just one minute.
No, you know, the next guy's really difficult, that's all.
Okay. My name is Joyce Morgan. I reside on 40 Upland Drive in our beautiful Calhoun neighborhood. I'm actually just here, for the record, that I'm here to oppose this application, and I ask that the commission reject it. We have been in the neighborhood since 2004. We love the neighborhood, and I do love the property that we're discussing tonight. However, we all have to just remember one thing, that the Perrys are developers, they're just here to try to maximize their return. And once this is built, they will move on to the next project. So whether the proposed project fits into the neighborhood, it is not important to them. However, it is very important to our neighborhood and our neighbors. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Before you stand up, Mr. Tessie, Mr. Hardman, I'm going to start with you and work down. Ms. Perry made a comment about, we've been asking all these different questions, they come in with one thing, we ask more things. I wanted to take an opportunity, starting with you, to poll the commission on where you are with the HO. The site plan would fall out of that, the site plan still doesn't have drainage, so, but on the HO, number one is really, are you, do you have any thoughts on the HO itself at this time that you would like to share? And do you feel that you have enough data to consider a decision tonight?
I'll answer in reverse order, I think, yes. I think I have enough data, and as I mentioned earlier, my concerns with the HO criteria, I don't feel are met in this instance. Because of, I think, the detriment to the spatial relationships that characterize the property. And you go back to 615 or 617, which aren't HO regulations, but I think they are consistent with the HO regulation.
Okay. Mr. Levy?
I think there's enough to go on to vote on HO, and I'm willing to do so, but if somebody objects, I'm happy to reconsider.
Any thoughts on the HO itself? Anything that you want to say to--
I think that the, the HO, I, I think that, that the application itself is something that is going in the right direction, and I think that it's certainly reasonable, but there's, there's, there's a lot more work they need to do on it. They've presented an intention to comply with a lot of what we're interested, at least that implied. But the question is, you know, the details and really understanding what this park setting really means and how to incorporate a building into it so that it, it does really respect not only the landscape, but also the neighborhood at large. And I think it's plausible.
Mr. McRae?
I have enough information on the HO. I think there's been more than enough testimony as to the, testing to the architecture, the province of this house, the neighborhood. I found actually, understanding the history of Greenwich, this is, you know, the beginning or even, you know, the hub of what we, what we refer to as great estates. And it's interesting, because actually, if you go, start to proceed north and east, you can't help but bump into another great estate. And it would seem to me that, yes, we've had a lot of those, those buildings, and there's other, other significant architecture that's been torn down. We do have an opportunity here to actually do something that we've heard countless times from the citizens of Greenwich, protecting our character or our, reduce the destruction of what contributes to the town.
Okay. Mr. Fox?
You're next.
No, I'll go last. Select a captain on a sinking ship.
I think--
Who would you guys do if I didn't make you laugh?
I, I think that I'm aligned with Nick in terms of the historic preservation of the house and the history of it. I'm also aligned with Mr. Levy that it needs to fit into the neighborhood. I think you can't just join the two. I mean, I think you, you could say it's historic significance, but I think you have to make the site plan as part of it, otherwise you get, it's disconnected--
Okay.
--from the neighborhood. I think, I think it needs to read like a coach house. I think they're making strides to make it read like a coach house in a secondary house. I think some further tweaking, you know, I'm not in love with the garage doors on the front. I haven't dug into it as much. But I think it needs to read like a coach house.
Okay. So--
So that's kind of where I am at.
So what I'm hearing you guys say is, you could decide it now, but you actually don't want to because you want to see the site plan move along farther towards what you think would work with the neighborhood before you decide the HO.
Yeah, because--
That's what, that's what the three of you were saying, McRae, Levy, and Fox.
I would prefer to do that.
You would prefer to do that. You want to see the site plan go farther along the coach house lines. I tend, right now, to feel the way Mr. Hardman does, and I have misgivings about this HO in general, because I'm not sure it's serving the intent of the regulation. But if three of you feel that this could move in a direction that would be satisfactory, that a site plan that would be satisfactory, I think then we leave that to the applicant to decide if they want to continue to work it down so that it looks like a coach house, because that's what they're saying. It gets smaller, you've got three people who are willing to work. I think, Mr. Hardman, do you feel very strongly at this point that you would not support it, or, I mean, but some changes might change your mind, right? Or not?
No, I think it, I, I think my feelings about what a coach house looks like are pretty minimal.
Maybe nobody in Greenwich would want to live in it.
I'm not inclined to sort of say there's--
That you could get to a--
Terribly inflexible. And I go back to sort of our process here, because the HO is the gateway to this whole process, and I think it should be respected, and we should vote on the HO as it's presented to us now.
Okay.
And if that means, you know, the developer has to recalibrate, I think they have to anyway, but I think out of respect for the HO regulation--
Okay.
--you know, we should make a decision or have a vote.
You guys okay with that? And we'll let Mr. Tessie make his closing arguments. He may sway you, so what, do you want to do that and see if you move anybody's spirit?
Well, the two spirits to move are yours and Mr. Hardman. And, you know, I took everything in, that all the residents said. And I, you know, go back to the beginning here, that feel a little guilty because I was the one that came up the idea to, for the clients who had already committed to buy the property, not even knowing about the HO zone, that they should take a hard look at the building, and they did. So I have a little guilt there. But I have a lot of respect for-- But I have a lot of respect for literally everyone's hearing their concerns. In my heart of hearts, if I thought, you know, that I was, that I was going to be part of an application that was gonna harm a community, I really wouldn't have any part of it. You know, I was born here, and a lot of people think I should've left a long time ago.
[laughing]
I haven't, but I obviously love the town, and was always considered, I know the black sheep to my cousin Peter's white sheep, but I'm the last one standing, I guess, 'cause Peter's gone. But I do wanna work, but I do wanna work.
Oh, Lord, that's when the...
I do wanna work with everyone here, because I truly believe that this project can, with a bit more tweaking, be a benefit. It's not gonna, I can't see it as a harm. I started out this way, saying this. With what we put into it, in terms of how we could spatially improve it, how we've lowered the height to 30 feet, lowered the profile, we basically have a building that's reading about, that really reads about 2,500 square feet. I think we're doing all the right things for the right reasons to preserve a building.
But they're not there yet. I mean, the folks that are willing to get it, the HO...
I understand that. I heard everything Peter said. The question is, I heard everything Peter said, and I appreciate what Nick said, and I appreciate what Mr. Low said, and his concerns for a community.
And Andy.
It's a lovely community there. I have a lot of clients there. And I used to represent the association. I'm sure I don't anymore.
No, they're shaking their heads, just so you know. Don't vote us.
No, no problem. And, you know, and I have friends there. And Mr. Charles Mallory's a dear friend. He's the one that owns the 137 Weaver Street property, and he tastefully decorated, redecorated, or redid the interior, and he maintained the exterior. And that's Charles. So I know the area. I understand the concerns about precedent. And I tried to take you through her little spreadsheet, the whole idea of that little spreadsheet there. And certainly, I'm not expecting Ms. Matthews to know every little nuance of the regulations. I wasn't trying to...
But she did a darn good job.
We're just pointing out that, in fact, it's a little bit less. But that really wasn't the main point. The main point is, when you, when you broke down the land area of the different buildings, of the different properties, realize, especially those two acres, which could be developed. And when you look at who had wetlands on it, who had topography on it, who already had a second unit, there really were only like four buildings left that were quote historic, that arguably had enough land to qualify for the second acre. And we were just trying to show you, if you look at those, three out of the four particularly, only maybe the Mallory house, had clearly been upgraded on the exterior, that I don't think the HDC would find worthy, okay? Anywhere near as worthy as this house. But at the bottom line, doesn't change, 'cause this is what pervades. There are people on the commission, whether alternate or regular members, Mr. Hardman and you particularly, are deeply concerned, but as, but about adversely affecting the character of this
But there's three people...
in adversely affecting their values. And I get values being here and there, especially in this climate.
But there are three people who are willing, and this is the key to me. What I heard these three gentlemen say is that if the site plan were further revised, they are looking for an even smaller profile in the site plan. I don't hear you saying, wow, I wanna do that, and I'm gonna move forward. We could leave it open, you could consider it. But I'm hearing them say, I don't wanna put words in your mouths, but I'm hearing you say, it's not there yet, the site plan's not there yet. They want something lower profile. Who said more like a coach house?
Well, I also say, you know... I think that, I get all that. We have to take a look at it. We've dug deep. It's the client's call at the end of the day. The point, at the end, it's not mine. How much, because it's not only profile, it's an integration of the entire site.
And they're looking for something less...
And it's a proper protection and balance with the neighborhood, so that you're not adversely affecting, basically, either the streetscape or the character of the area, which leads into the issue of values. Well, only thing we can do, and this is what I would suggest, because you do have time, is that you leave it open. Let me discuss with the clients, because they've got the benefit of hearing everything you have to say.
That's why I wanted to put this out before you. What, we wanted to be fully transparent and say to you, here's where we are, here's what these guys are looking for. You weigh it. We can leave it open. You weigh it, decide what you wanna do going forward. You know kinda where everybody is on it, and see if you wanna keep looking at it.
I kinda know. I kinda think that the question is, Mr. Hardman has expressed his opinions and his concerns. We know we need four out of five votes. In case everybody else didn't know, can tell them, we need four out of five of your votes. We're not there. I don't know if we can get there.
Right.
But given how much time the clients have spent on it, and you've spent on it, and I understand they've all spent on it, let's see what we can do. If we can't get there...
We'll leave it open, and you make a decision then.
You know, thank you.
You guys make a decision on how you wanna move forward. You know where everybody is.
I know, I know where to get in touch with you.
Oh, no, I'm gonna hide. Ms. Perry, you're never gonna find me. Ms. Perry has a question for you, though.
For me?
Should I ask and clarify?
Yeah, you could. I mean, it's, yeah.
Sure.
Sorry. You need to keep it short, 'cause the next applicant's about to fall asleep.
So, I'm sorry to the next applicant. I mean, I have, I have a few questions, because a few things that I've been hearing, which is, the intent of the HO zone, and whether we wanna keep the HO zone, or whether, you know, all the complainants. I mean, I read the paper here. I live here. I'm a member of the community, not in that association, but in Greenwich. And, you know, Millbank had the issues with houses being torn down. So...
I just had an idea. You know what we could do for you, that would make a lot more sense, is the three people who weighed in on wanting to see changes could write Pat and Katie, and they could give you the specific things that they're looking for. Think on it, and send you guys exactly, 'cause what you're looking for right now is what do you want from each of them, rather than just have them talk out loud.
Exactly, right.
Okay. So I'll ask them to do that, those three people, and...
Does Mrs. Perry have a specific question, or is it just that you wanna hear the list?
Well, that's the whole thing, is that we keep...
What are they looking for?
We keep doing this exercise because of this HO zone. We're spending money, architects, engineering.
Yeah, 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 got it.
First, we changed the house, rotated it.
Right, right.
But we can rotate it back and have the garages on the other side. So it's like, I can do this 10, 20 times.
So we're gonna ask the three of them?
Quick.
Okay.
I imagined a driveway sweeping up to the main house, and on the right is a simple carriage house that looks like a carriage.
And you may not wanna do that. Nick?
That's...
I guess all three of you have to weigh in and...
Make this easy, actually. I think, actually, what I'm really most concerned about is, actually, just go to your landscape architect. He's talking about red maples on the street.
Yep.
And giant arborvitae, I think, actually, as a screen to the street.
Wow, that's...
Is actually, how does that, how does that work? Because I think the arborvitae, yeah, use them everywhere, that kind of thing. But is there something better? Holly, so on so forth. I think that's one of the biggest concerns I have, is what's happening right there at that street line. I think, actually, everybody talks about the sweeping driveway. It's there. It sweeps by. And I think, actually, one of those things is that it uses the driveway that's out there. It would've been great if there was another driveway at the far side, because actually, a house of this size, that existing house, what had actually probably had two entrances, went to the garage in one side, and went to the main house on the other. Probably not, you know, it would've been typical of that building, but probably not something they built at the time. So, but I think, actually, my concern is actually that street line and the landscaping.
So you're okay with the building right now?
Yeah.
So my question is regarding the landscaping. Do you wanna see, 'cause there's septic, so there's lawn there.
I see it.
Do you wanna see the lawn, or do you want the trees hiding? That's what I wanna know.
Yeah. What I'll do is actually send my notes up to staff.
No, you can't get up and walk away. You've got to stop listening. More stuff. All right. Okay. I really do think it's better if, unless Mr. Levy can be very concise on what he's looking for.
I don't mind sending notes to staff.
Okay. I think that's better.
I think that it would just probably be better.
Thank you.
Getting and writing and comments are gonna be very helpful to us.
Yeah. Just so for everyone in the room, that that list will be public knowledge once it's, once it ceases to be a draft. It'll be for everybody's information.
I think that's the best way to do it. And...
Yes.
Okay, everybody gets to go on break. It's 10:41. You think you guys could be here by 10:50?
Oh, yeah.
And wash your hands.
For a change.
Oh, my gosh, I feel like my skin's getting long. Do you guys want to... You can put one to Katie for the record.
This is, oh, then, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I tried to get Andy to not talk and see what happens. He complains if people talk.
All right, I do that. Okay. All right, just, okay. That's all right. That was just curious. But, you know, the more I look at it, I realize that they could really modify this. I, you have this.
Yeah, it's been a busy week for me.
I can't keep up?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of activity, schools.
Um, we're gonna do a set of...
Yeah.
What are you gonna, are you gonna do the break?
I think that's here.
Isn't that until, what, 22nd? Two more weeks?
It's always on this Sunday.
So, first year.
Yeah.
You wanna put on this? What I like?
That one?
That it?
Yeah.
He explained why.
It looks at the sky. There was only so much stuff he would like to call, so.
Just go click right through, that's really fine, yes or no.
I can't change the word.
It's all right, I think it's a great.
True.
We'll mention.
What?
The color is better on that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna buy him a sixty-five degree screen, huh?
Well, maybe we turn the middle lights off.
Are you doing that modernist color?
Yes.
Are you an agent?
Yes.
Are you a dealer?
No. Field.
Field, that's right, okay, remember where you're at, right.
Buddy?
Yeah?
Um. Okay, so I have one, two, three, four foot, yes. Uh, our next application, number six, Freed and Taylor LLC, a preliminary site plan and special permit uh, at one hundred East Putnam Avenue. Mr. Haslam.
Good evening, Chip Haslam for the applicant. With me is Andy Toth, who's the applicant, uh, the principal of the applicant, um, and Eric Zambel, you know from Granoff, and Chris Sotola as well, from Granoff Architects. Um, we thought we'd just come by and update you on what we've been doing the past few weeks for this plan, and try to, uh, indicate changes we've made, um, that you had requested, uh, or recommended. I also did want us to state that, uh, if you recall at the last meeting, it was mentioned that Peter Berg was here at that time, and that perhaps we should meet with the neighborhood, and, uh, and we did, and Peter organized that back in January, which I really appreciated.
And you're not gonna do the third lane on Taylor anymore?
Well.
The neighbors don't want it?
We would prefer to do it, but the neighbors feel pretty strongly about general pedestrian access around Cos Cob and maintaining safety, so I will address that shortly at the end, but we're gonna leave it to the commission's discretion in this regard. Overall, it was a really good meeting, um, everyone there was supportive of the project.
Yeah, so are you.
At this location, and, uh, there were some concerns about, um, Taylor Drive, Johannes Richter was here earlier, I think he must have left now, but, uh, Johannes was in Taylor, and he was concerned about some of the screening aspects along Taylor, which we tried to address. Um, there were several RTM members that were there representing both Cos Cob districts. Again, they spoke in support of it, thought it was a very good application, could always use some tweaking to make it fit in with, uh, Cos Cob, and so that's an ongoing process, which, uh, we hope to do. With regard to, so it's really just talking about creating more screening, uh, both as to Taylor, and also, uh, even though Field is up on top of the hill, we've tried more screening in the back there, too. We're a little bit low to push the building much farther back from the street, because it allows us to do those landscaping, uh, in the corners, and also, of course, the parking's always an issue, too. Uh, but also, we wanted to maintain the streetscape, and I'll let Eric talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Um, we did want to introduce some more landscaping elements in the front, and, uh, and we've even talked today about maybe doing some trees, uh, along certain places, maybe in lieu of doing the tower, which you see here, which I'm necessarily not sold on, but, Mr. Levy, you'd mentioned you wanted to do something distinctive in there, and you talked about like a tower concept, so we wanted to get more, uh, input from the commission as to how you felt about, maybe this.
Just, uh, yeah, the idea is to, it's a corner, so, address the corner.
Right, so I'll have.
The idea.
I'll have Eric explain what he was trying to do in that regard, and what the limitations were on that, too. Um, and then, uh, lastly, as I said, I just wanted to address the third lane issue, and we can go either way on that, we prefer to have that third lane, you're really not making it much wider than it currently is. Our traffic engineer tells us that you're really adding maybe a second or two in your time that you'd have to cross over there to get to the other side, and he also indicated, he was at the meeting as well, that his sense of the meeting was that the people there are more concerned about maintaining good pedestrian safety and access throughout Cos Cob, it was their concern, it wasn't necessarily specific to this site or this third lane, but there were a couple of people that did speak to it, and said they'd prefer that we didn't have that third lane, so that's something for the commission, working with your DPW engineers, I think, to work out. Um, it'd be preferable, moving traffic, and we don't think it would have a substantial impact on pedestrians.
I got some good feedback, um, about the meeting as well, and somebody, did they mention to you that they were so pleased that you've closed the, that driveway from?
Taylor, yes, yeah.
No, from the Post Road.
Oh, yes, yes, so there's only one, right.
That's what I heard, was the other comment that you got, somebody sent me some notes on the meeting.
I think it was Peter Berg, because I think I got a copy of it, and, uh, I think I, um, augmented it a bit, but generally speaking, it was a great meeting, I don't think I can recall the last time I had, uh, a meeting with a neighborhood like that to discuss a project of this nature.
It was interesting, uh, okay.
So, I'll let Eric describe, uh, what changes we've made to the building in response to some of your comments.
Before you do that.
Yes.
I owe you an answer on something. So, I'm gonna answer an issue that's open from the CEO. I was unable to reach this CEO today, um, and if you guys disagree with me, just say, the, the CEO believes that this application is not consistent with six one oh three B because of the no above grade parking structure. It's hard to figure out where you are relative to grade on the parking, but I believe that the intent of the regulation is above grade, they're talking about a second floor, above grade.
Right.
They aren't talking about what you essentially have being parking at grade, 'cause you're essentially at grade as I read your parking.
Correct, and I thought that the CEO was, had basically bounced it back to the commission to make the ultimate determination, but.
And so I'm giving you the interpretation that I have, and unless someone lynches me, I think that's where we are, Nick was the only one who originally agreed with the CEO, but the language says above grade.
Right.
And you are at grade. The second thing is that I believe that the intent of this regulation is to not have, in, in the LBR, is to not have a standalone parking structure that is multi-story and is only parking. That's what I believe that they would have been trying to accomplish, the great fathers and mothers of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so, my take on both those counts is that you would be okay with this design that you have here on the parking.
For the park.
For the parking. For the parking.
Right.
For the parking.
No, I understand.
So, now, that doesn't mean. You know that there are people, he's about to say it, Mr. Hardman would like you to move it down, and then you would definitely not be above grade, right? Yes, sir, Mr. Hardman?
Yeah, if it's below grade, it's not above grade.
Exactly, and he has, would you like to say it for yourself?
Well, say, if it's below grade, it's not above grade.
And he would love to have it go down some more, correct?
Yes, but I, I think as far as, I think that this idea above or below, I, I think maybe it's overthinking it to just say that above grade means, uh, something above grade level, uh, like a second story, I, I think that above grade really means at grade or above.
Well, the, my read is, my read is that it doesn't mean at grade or above, it's just above. My read is that if it was at grade.
But, but it's below grade or it's above grade, I don't think you, you're not, I don't thi, I think, the way that I read it, it's below or above.
Yeah.
So, there's a zero there, there's zero elevation, anything is above zero.
You move it an inch below grade.
I, I, my interpretation would be that you could see under it.
Yeah.
So, if parking would, and I'm, I'm gonna use Weeden as an example, where they have an upper deck and a lower deck.
Mm-hmm.
That upper deck is above grade, therefore, you can see under the parking.
Spring Street, the one off of Old Track where it has that second level, that is above.
At grade.
That's above grade. Um, I did some research on it with zoning people.
Okay.
So, um, with.
I think for me, it's just, I think of it logically, it's that if I have parking at grade, and I have no structure above it, it's not a parking structure. If I have a structure above it, um, it's still not a parking structure if it's not used to park cars. If I then get rid of that structure above it, I still have the parked cars at grade, so, there's no structure associated with it.
I think Mr. Levy was just kinda okay with it, and Nick didn't say anything, so we can go on to the design of the building, which I think they're.
And we can look into.
Mr. Haslam, I disagree with your, your thought on that in terms of, of, uh, parking structure above. Um, I think it's, my, my interpretation is to the intent of this is that parking is at grade, and that if you are accommodating for any reason the parking at grade to be above it, that's the parking structure, and what I'm saying is that you actually are creating a parking garage under the building, whereas the building itself could be at grade if it didn't require all of this parking, and, so you're actually just building a structure to accommodate parking, and that's, that's the inverse, that's why I come out on my side, is that you're building a structure to accommodate parking, which is a parking structure to me.
Okay, and so, a parking structure where, um, I came out with my expert people, is that a parking structure is a parking structure only, and that the second story of the building would be parking and not an apartment building, and that there are examples in town where we have done that, where if you're, so that's the take, this is not, what they are trying to avoid when they wrote this regulation is to have multi-story parking buildings like they have all over the country, just parking, that that would be what they're trying to avoid, so that's my interpretation. Um, can we get a consensus, because if we can't, they can't go forward with this design, with any design that they have right now.
I would say that this is a parking structure.
Okay, so I think we're gonna have to take a vote on that, I don't know how else to do it, because Nick and I don't agree, um, the five of us are gonna have to vote and decide. Andy?
I don't think it's a structure.
Okay.
I don't think it's a structure.
I think it doesn't qualify.
You were with Nick. Let me work with Jody some more, that's all I can offer you, because.
If we dig down.
If you dug down.
An inch, uh, two inches, I mean, what.
Levy wants more than that.
Well, let's just say, that's a different thing, whether you want to go down for other reasons, aesthetic reasons, but if.
There's a technicality there, so, I think that's, that's the point, below. So, if you, do you, there's a technicality here, and I think that's a reasonable thing to do. To say, okay, I'm gonna be below.
What?
All right, so. What that means. Uh, I don't know if it's an inch or if it needs to be two feet, I don't know.
Okay, um, we're gonna go back to our, here's the deal we just made, Nick is gonna, I talked to zoning people, we're gonna send Nick to talk to them, to interpret, to get some thoughts on interpreting our regulation, 'cause we're obviously a little stuck, so.
What I, I think.
But we're, we're our own.
We are, but the commission has to interpret, has to reach unanimity, and we're not at uni, we're not even at a four-one. If I could have convinced Mr. Levy, I mean, Mr. Hardman, we would have been fine, but we would have, Nick would have lost out, but.
I've done that before. What I think I would like to do is, like, I need more time to wrap my, my head around this. Okay, we have a difference of opinion on this, a difference of interpretation.
Is Sound Beach, is Sound Beach LBR one, LBR?
An old Greenwich.
An old Greenwich?
No, that's LB.
That's LB.
What I, what I would like to hear about what's happened now, since the last time we met, in terms of the, the building itself.
I don't think so.
I do have some, excuse me, other questions about that, but regardless of what we're talking about here, let's talk about what, what's happening, um, what the changes are, um, where, in what direction you're going.
Okay, may I just make one inquiry, though, before we move on to that? It, would your position change, Mr. McRee, if we went down one inch, so that we're actually below grade? I'm not saying that's what we do, we may go down five feet, I, I'm not sure if that's where the commission's going ultimately on the special permit, but.
Going down, yes.
But that would cure your problem as far as.
I think what I'm looking at is that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the same exact provision, and you did the design for Sound Beach. Notwithstanding other provisions of these regulations, no above-grade parking structures shall be permitted, so you, if we were okay with Sound Beach, we gotta be okay.
We'll have to be okay with this, okay?
Done.
Mr. Fox.
Okay, every now and then, every now and then he earns his keep, hey, weren't you on, weren't you on Sound Beach?
Yes, that's my application.
It was your building.
Right.
So, why didn't you frickin' tell them this, that I was right?
I was just shocked that we used to be.
I love it when someone tells them I'm right.
The magnificent Mr. Fox.
Hey, back here, where? Mr. Zambel, on this point, in this, in this, this.
Okay, so we're good with the parking?
Go ahead, Eric.
This, this doesn't show up so well here, but. Eric Zambel of Granoff Architects, I'm sorry, members of the board, Madam Chairperson, Eric Zambel. Um, the, what I'm, sorry, what I'm showing in this particular section, um, and not as well as I would like to, this is a blue line that comes down through here, and this is where existing grade goes through the building, through the middle of the building, so we are lowering the grade at the, at the building, I mean, it's the, it's more than the one inch, but it's, it's, it's what we're doing, just to be able to get legal parking within the facility. Um, Mr. Hardman and I disagreed on this, on a previous project, when I, when we were talking about pushing parking below, and the requirements that are related to, um, building code and zoning regulations and, um, Americans with disabilities, but each one of those has a specific grade that's permitted, um, for parking a car, walking on the surface, or using a wheelchair on that, those surfaces, um, and, and that is what this particular slope underneath the building happens to achieve. So, that's, that's our.
Okay, Tom, I mean, you know, Mr. Hardman. Don't redo the deal, you got the deal, Mr. Hardman would always like the parking to be below ground, and the lower the better.
Right, and, and some sites, like the one next door, are perfect for that.
Yeah, but it's not just parking for the sake of parking, it's parking for the sake of.
Of the building height.
The mass of the building.
Yeah.
We agree.
We agree with you, we're just giving you a hard time.
So, let, let, let's pretend I did a very eloquent presentation on the site and where it is, and we're all very familiar with that, and that we, we know the CVS building, we know the post office, we know the fire department, Starbucks, et cetera. All right, so, a few things that we've done related to, uh, or we've been working on related to the site. We've, we've been pulling our retaining wall off the neighbor's property at the back here, so that we can get some screening, provide a fence, and, um, uh, we were gonna try to talk to the neighbor, um, Chip, I don't know if that ever happened, about maybe doing some, uh, providing some screening on, on, on that property as well. Um, you can see that we've, um, we're starting to get into landscape, we haven't had our landscape designers work on this, but we do have some, um, intentions of, um, planting the corners up, um, getting some street trees along the, the frontage of, of, uh, of the retail space, and bringing a little bit into, uh, the parking. Right now, the, the parking, you can come in, and you can enter this way, or, um, you can come in, you can park down here for the bank, this is a little ramp up from where we are, um, coming down with the building, a lot of the, these comments that I was talking about, uh, relative to the grade, um, have to do with our floor elevations, and, and how we, um, uh, approach the street, the sidewalk, and, and the corner, um, that we'll talk about in a little bit, um, but, the, um, the accessible spots are required, um, essentially through Connecticut, um, building code, um, that we provide two, if we're gonna provide any parking in, uh, under a building or covered, that we provide two van spaces, as that covered, uh, under the building parking, so, we've, we have an accessible van spot here towards the apartment entrance, and we have another one down here towards our two, uh, retail tenants. These two, uh, establish, uh, where we are grade-wise relative to not turning our back to the, to the street, so we wanna, we wanna be able to have floor elevations that, um, address the sidewalk, and, um, also allow for access from, from the parking side, so we have a front-to-back, uh, entrance sequence here, here, and for a second tenant, uh, those would be right here. Now, the reason I go into that, the sidewalk here is roughly at eleven feet, our, uh, elevation uh, at our bank here is fifteen point four feet, so that's a, that's a significant grade that we need to come up from that street, um, if we were to, um, you, access the building from the parking side, um, for ADA here, and then try to get up from, you know, five feet, four feet from, um, this corner in, into the space here, so, we, we took the approach to landscape that out, and, um, as Chip, uh, alluded to, we're gonna use these trees to help accentuate that corner condition, that we're, we've also, um, accentuated from the previous. from the previous round through a series of lowering the building. So we've lowered the building, let me, we've lowered the building almost three feet, and that's through a little bit more coordination with our civil engineer to where we could get the grade. This is our, this is our high point. So we, basically the, the grade comes up here, so we would, we, we would pitch the water this way, and then we would pitch water this way. So this, this is our, our, our hump right in here. So we need to maintain an eight-foot-two clearance from the, the path down here into that parking spot, and we have to maintain that here. So we were able to, he, Charlie was able to get our grade maybe about a foot lower than what, where we anticipated it being. And we made some movements within the building itself to bring that down. And that's where the two-foot-ten, two-foot-nine, I think, is, is what the, the whole building came down. And through that, we lowered the, not only the second floor, but we lowered the roof that we had at the bank, and that accentuates the, the corner piece sign right here. So there's, there's the accentuation of that, there's the lowering of, of the roof over the rest of the bank. There, there's been some back and forth with the, well, I'll get to that in a second. And then we pushed the third floor back seven to eight, seven or eight feet at the residential park, creating a terrace over here. So I can show you that on the, on the plan. So this, this is our frontage on our, on our first floor residential or the second floor of the building. And then this is the step back for the apartments on the second floor residential or the third floor of the building.
He just added this.
How many? What is the setback? You said, how many feet?
At seven feet, seven or eight feet. At seven to eight feet. I think it's seven clear and then you have the parapet. So it's, it's roughly eight feet total. And then we did have a, a miss on our part regarding the, the bulkhead interpretation. We kept looking at it in section from one side and we didn't look, we weren't looking at it from the front. So, and when that was brought up, we also had a concern that I think we brought up, or maybe I brought it up in a separate meeting with Peter Park, Peter Robinson, not the, the pre-app meeting, where I needed 10 feet on the, for my egress. And as you'll see in this section here, we've pulled the retail, an additional, Chris, what, four feet or so from, from the property line so that we get a full 10 feet beyond the, the stair. So that, that solved that, that code issue. It gives us a little bit more planting space on, on just that west side. And you'll see that in, in the elevation when we get to that. But we are now confidently in compliance with the bulkhead regulation. I haven't met with Jody yet to go over that.
On 6127. I was struggling just to, you know, when I was playing around with the parking grade, I was having a little trouble getting from, and A301 and the window configuration that's shown on the western elevation versus what you have on A101.
I don't have my numbers.
On that one bedroom that's in the corner. So if you're at A101 and you have in that back corner...
Yeah.
You have a one bedroom?
Yes.
Is that, so you've got a window over the toilet, and then on A101 you show no windows? But on A301, it's like a casement-y looking window in that location where you have no windows, it looks like. Or maybe you mean it to be on the third floor, but the third floor doesn't show windows on your plan either? Yeah, see what...
So we...
That casement, go back, go back, go back. Go to, what's your A301?
Went the wrong way, sorry.
Oh, there, stop. No, no, keep going. Go back to, there, there, that's it. Now, see where you have that casement window all the way on the left?
Yes.
Keep going. More left, that one.
Yep.
It doesn't show up on the floor plans.
It doesn't show up on the third floor plans either?
On the second or third floor plans. There's no casement window there.
Okay. That's, that's a drafting error.
Now, is that, so you, there's a, just, so is that, there's the second floor one bedroom, is part of that below grade back there?
On, on the, on the west side, it is below grade.
On the west side, that apartment is below grade?
It, it, it faces the cutout that is on the...
So I don't mean to be a devil's advocate here, but if you've got an apartment below grade, you were saying you couldn't do the parking below grade because of the water table? But you're putting an apartment below grade? I mean...
The parking is not, the apartment is not below grade. The apartment is...
You just said yes to me.
I did, I did say yes, but I realize you're interpreting it differently than I was or vice versa. The...
I'm sorry, below grade is below grade even to an architect.
Okay.
Yeah, come back if you, yeah. So it, it straightened, that was just, so my question was aimed, there was this inconsistency, and I was trying to figure out where the grade was and how the parking worked.
Yes.
So it, just something, it's just a technical thing, but I'm, was working with that regulation, trying to do the interpretation. You're saying that the entire apartment is above grade, that that toilet window is not just at grade there because it looks like...
I'm saying the grade along here comes up so that this, this apartment on the second floor along this wall is below grade.
So he means by below grade what I mean by below grade? Okay.
It's completely open on this side.
Okay.
So how's it below grade?
Because on the western...
It's grade adjacent. It's...
But, but see, there's no window over the toilet. I'm sorry, I got a little obsessed trying to figure this out, but there's no window over the toilet on 301 on the second floor. There's only one over, out on, over, on the third floor, which means that that second floor apartment is below ground. So I'm just saying is, I'm not clear how this works. So it seems to me like on the western side, you're below grade.
I think this is a cross-section you're looking at. It's, that's the grade adjacent, but it's open next to the building itself.
The windows don't work.
But the windows, as I said, that's a drafter's error. And we talked about that, I think, today, Chris, didn't we discuss that?
All right, well, you guys work it out because...
We'll figure it out, but that's, we talked about that, that's just missing.
All right, and make sure that you...
It's not an apartment that's underground.
It's, right.
Okay.
I'll have a better, I'll have a section through that.
Okay, yes. The cross-sections, I looked at the cross-sections and they didn't help a lot.
I don't have that one.
Yeah, okay.
That's fair, so.
Okay. All right, so go ahead. You guys were going to do some big picture feedback for Mr. Zambell.
Yeah.
Big picture feedback.
Excuse me, can I make two comments?
Mr. Toth.
Just because I was at the meeting the other day, in regards to the traffic...
Say your name, please.
Oh, Andrew Toth, applicant. In regard to the accident report, and there was a discrepancy with 100 Post Road and 100 East Putnam Avenue.
Yeah, yeah.
And Chip spoke to Chris and Chris from Tegan-Bonner Traffic.
They fixed it.
That's all. No, that's not how they do their study. And you can correct me if I'm wrong. They do a study based on all of the accident reports in the area. So they take into consideration both addresses. Is that right? I'll let you summarize. I just want to make sure I get that.
Well, but what we never got from anybody who counted the accidents was, were they significant or not?
No, they're minimal. They're both minimal.
I mean, we didn't know what those numbers meant.
The difference is, the police look at 100 East Putnam Avenue, which is also, there's a 100 Putnam Avenue, whereas Tegan-Bonner looks at a section of the, so that includes Strickland, that includes whatever, and the numbers are insignificant. At worst, they came to seven accidents in a year, and there were no fatalities. Unfortunately, there was one this year, but this is for 2019, back four years. And the most offender benders. It's actually remarkable given that intersection.
The interactivity was so crazy and predictable that...
So that's, and there was one, if you remember, about 10 years ago in the same spot, too, somebody hit a telephone pole there. But in any event, so I think that's, that was minimal.
Okay, so I'm going to see if we can give you some big picture feedback on the changes.
I've got two more.
You have more?
Um...
I think you used it up.
No, the, the other thing was, we were trying in the meeting, what I heard from you, to try to get more streetscaping along East Putnam Avenue. So we are also open, that Eric didn't mention, but we did discuss, we can move the sidewalk closer to the building and put screening on the other side of the sidewalk if you feel that works better. So we're open to that. The other thing was, I heard comments about buildings being real close to the street. So I went out there and measured. I also heard about the red brick, so I took pictures of the library, the firehouse, the schoolhouse. CBS is all orange, all the other ones are red brick with a little black in it, so I'm open for that. I happen to like the library brick better, so we're all good there.
As long as it doesn't look like the CBS.
But what I did measure is CBS is 10 feet, and I did edge of pavement, because to me that's where the safety is, right?
I know.
So you got the Griff Havers across the street.
Yep.
It's maybe a little bit longer around the curve, it gets a little bit wider. When you get to the post office, it's probably 15 feet. CBS is 10 feet. We're 23 feet from edge of pavement. So just wanted to get those notes.
All right. That doesn't seem...
And what's the existing bank?
25, 25 and a half.
Yes.
Yes, to East Putnam Avenue. It's 25 and a half.
Now, that's the property line.
I think property line, no.
No, to east, it says to East Putnam Avenue on Mr. LaRose Traffic, on Mr. LaRose.
Well, that was the property line. I'm sorry.
Okay, so why does it say, so when it says 10 feet, Patrick, for the proposed, that is to the property line on the plan?
Those are all the setbacks for zoning purposes, not, not the...
To the property line. Okay. And that, where you've got 25 and a half to EPA, you mean to the property line?
To the property line along East Putnam. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if that confused anybody.
Okay. All righty, got you. That was a good clarification.
All right. So did you want to go with feedback now, or is there anything?
Guys, feedback.
Let's look at that front facade. So you're, you're doing a nice, using very classical elements in, in that facade, except for the corner, it's contemporary. So I'm a little confused. I don't even, you know, I don't, I hope you don't think that's a tower. It's not a tower.
I don't think of it as a tower. I'm actually trying not to do a tower because there are several in the area.
So the, the accentuation of a corner is, is, the way, at least, you know, this is just a rendering item, but it, the way it's articulated is more contemporary, where everything else is really quite classically oriented, where it's, it's, you know, a masonry wall with, with windows punched into it, and the storefront below it. And it's symmetrically articulated. But that, that corner piece is, doesn't have the same character, and it certainly doesn't have the same scale.
I did work on it.
So I'm just curious about what you're trying to do. What I would try to do is, is keep the, the same...
Not the trees.
Articulation of what you have in the higher element over there with the two-story piece, and you could bring that piece over to the corner, and then it would look a little bit more balanced. But, but what you did there just, just seems a little bit off to me.
I, I thought that was awkward, too. There's something awkward about it. And would you prefer, though, that we just bring that down so it's at the same height as the middle?
I mean, that might be better. It just, I think that if you have four and four, you know, I don't know, you have to figure that out. I mean, it's just, it's just a question of getting it to work right, yeah.
Well, I guess the question is, would you rather we went up to match the, the elements on the west, or would you prefer that we go down so as we have a kind of continuity with the, the middle unit plus the shed roof to the, to the CBS building, which all kind of lines up? I just, it's kind of an important piece. Mr. Levy, this is your, I know this is your...
Well, I mean, I, I gave you my best shot, but you didn't take it, so I, I don't know what to tell you. So the, I would say that the way you've articulated it is confusing and in that you're using, you're creating a completely different element on the end, which has, the scale of which, and also the character, which is more contemporary, has nothing to do with the rest of the scheme.
We have, so... Klein and I have, have discussed introducing more of an entablature-type piece to, to this, to help to tie it together.
Now, yeah, and I think we'll get some direction from May or C in this, too, when we ultimately go with, to them with this design or with their design, and also with the landscape, et cetera, so.
I, I just wanted to understand exactly what you're trying to do, because I don't understand what you're trying to do.
Um, that's, that's, that's fine. I was, I was trying to get, I, I wasn't here for your first articulation, so I, I'm going to blame my, you know, counterparts for not, not quite getting it right for me. And I was not wanting to do a tower, so maybe I was fighting that sort of, just a little bit.
Understandable. But you, you know, you have these four bays for the, the two, three, two, three-story piece.
Yes.
And then you have three bays and then one bay. So that's a very unusual kind of articulation, too.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it's all very simple to work out. It's not a big deal.
It, I, I agree.
Good, we'll work it.
Okay, guys, Nick?
Roof plan. I'm looking at the roof plan that was supplied, and I can't tell what's what.
Okay.
I think I really need to have some more detail on that to understand what's standing seam roof and what's not. Because it's, I can't, trying to kind of put the elevations to the, to the roof plan and see how things are set back, but it's not working for me in terms of what I have in front of me. So I think actually, if there's a better drawing, great. If not, I think actually taking a look at that and what is standing seam, what is parapet, so on and so forth.
Mr. Mackey, I just have a question on that, too. This is preliminary still at this point. Is this something that we should take up with the ARC and then come back to you once we have some input from them, so we're not having...
I think actually, us, ARC, anybody, somebody's going to have to, some, we will all be looking at that and actually want to talk about that.
So here's kind of my take on it. If we could settle on the big issues, the parking we've done, the massing, the height, the FAR, the things that are hard for, that ARC cannot do, we could then send it on to ARC and have them work on the rest of it. But I don't want them to get stuck where ARC says the building is too big. And, you know, you're like, you need to hear from us that we're okay with the, the FAR where it is.
Okay.
That's what I think we, we need to make, give the box, settle on the box, so that we can let ARC finish up the design. That's what I would suggest to you guys.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we're going to work it...
No, I'm not going to get into detail on this.
Got it. Okay.
So this is where we kind of are right now with our plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. When last we met, we were talking about actually pushing the building back. I'm not too sure if we were not correct enough about what we were looking for. You've pushed the second floor black, but I think what we were looking for is actually to have the whole building pushed back. Again, getting back to that relationship between the curb and the height of the building. Yes, CVS, which we all regret, right on the street, so on and so forth, but giving us a little bit of relief in terms of that ratio, ratio between the curb and the height of the building. We've talked about it countless times in all kinds of projects. It's really, that's what we're looking for. You have 23 feet plus or minus in the back before you hit your setback. That's something to consider. You could actually take a couple of units in the middle and make the whole building that much shorter, too, as well. The accessible spaces are inside, under the garage. If they were put outside, you probably could lower the garage more.
I can't do that. State code does not allow me to do this. It's very black and white.
Accessible spaces.
It's very black and white. The state code says if you have covered parking, you have to provide it for accessible.
Okay. At the front, on the post road.
If you have covered parking, part of the covered parking has to be accessible. Is that correct, or you just simply have to have accessible spots somewhere?
You have to treat them the same as you treat the non-disabled people, they have to be treated equally.
It specifically states, there's two, two parts of the code that kind of circle back, that, that every, every first spot needs to be a van-accessible spot. So that's kind of a circular thing. And if you have a covered spot, you have to have two covered spots. So it just kind of gets you there. But the next line that's most important, that says that if any covered spots are provided, you must, it doesn't actually say you must provide equal, says that in the ADA, but that you must provide two, you must provide interior spots, and then that takes you into the, you must provide two. I had the section of the code.
Okay, that's okay.
We can provide that.
Moving on, at the post road. We have existing sidewalk.
Correct.
You're closing up the curb cut, that's great. But I have a lot of paving right against the building. Getting back to what we were talking about, actually pushing the building back, I think it was one of those issues that we have an opportunity that affords us to have more green space in front of the building. Understanding you haven't worked on the landscape plan too hard, but I think actually, an evaluation of what's happening between the curb and the building, and the sidewalk, and the hardscape, and all that kind of stuff. You have three doors there, you know, do I need all of this patio in front to get to a door off a sidewalk?
We've already started to add more landscaping materials to that, but...
All the parkings in the back, too.
Part of the building, so the answer is yes. If I'm going to have a, a second tenant in that retail spot, I have to provide access.
In the back corner, you have, top of wall is 17, bottom wall is, is 15, 9, so you're really kind of digging into that. We'll get into that in a second, digging in. Again, the architecture will let ARC kind of roam with that, because I'm seeing all kinds of interesting things that I have questions about, but I don't want to get into the detail. One thing I'd like to actually verify, as I understand it, and actually, Mr. Zambell, that picture, leave that, go back. As I look at that picture, I see a stand of old growth trees behind the existing bank building on the slope. Front, yeah, on the slope, okay. I was out there, I have pictures with me right now, and I have a question. Understanding that actually that slope is gonna be cut into, we will be losing all of those trees? Because you only have like a five-foot, 10-foot setback now between the adjacent property owner and the, and the building, the foundation of the new building.
Correct.
Okay, so all of those trees are gone?
All those trees that are on that ledge adjacent to, to that property line will be gone.
Okay.
That was your concern.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood that right, because I'm not too sure if there's anybody else who understands that as well, is that we're looking at the building here, but actually, its relationship to what everybody thinks is there is gonna be very different once all those trees come down. That's a good, that's a good example of...
This, this is what you're talking about, these...
Yeah.
This, this is, this is where the property line is, right?
Right. So the back of the building is only a few feet to the right of that fence post?
Yes. Can you do the aerial?
Right, that's, that's it. So I'm looking at the, the west elevation of the building, and the east side of that fence post, and I'm looking at 5, 10 feet?
We have a 6-foot-10 setback.
There you go, 6-foot-10, okay.
Still have the trees in there?
No, he just said no, the trees are gone. Yeah.
That green trees?
All those trees are... This will be here.
Yeah, no, Nick went to look at it today, was trying to get me...
Most of that, that may be gone, there'll be some left.
And moreover, what, what happens in the rear as you excavate for the parking, and is, does that change any of those trees? I think the Google image had some on the hill, is that, does that, are those gonna be threatened, I guess, would be the next question? Not, not along the western facade, but along the northern deserts?
We're, we're cutting back into that as well, so there'll be some loss. We've tried to hole and tier so that we can preserve what, some of those, so I can have Charlie and the landscape architect put a tree preservation, tree removal plan together.
All right, so I'm making that up, and looking at a study of that area in particular, and what's gonna be lost, and what we could maybe do to...
It's my understanding...
Also, you've got a house that's really close to the north of, where you're cutting into the hill.
Where you're cutting into the, the hill, and there's a house literally right next to it. And it'd be interesting for you on the elevation, since it is so close to that rear line, to show that house. You know, it, it's literally... Right there. Yeah, so it'd be interesting to see it on the elevation.
Yeah, and it's also interesting, because one of the reasons why some modifications we made, and didn't push the building back, was maintain the street in the front, but also provide for landscaping in that back corner, not just on Taylor, but also on...
Right, but I'm just saying is, in, in the site plan, in the trees, to highlight where that, those houses are, so you can see the proximity, because their setbacks are pretty tight.
Eric, if you leave it right there, sorry, Mr. Zambell, those, those trees that are making up along the skyline there, those are all in, in threat, right? I mean, that's...
I, I think it's too general to say yes, at this point. Where do you want me going?
Or just, or you can pull that microphone with you.
So where the building ends, those trees, you know, we're gonna add to it, but we're not gonna take any of those trees down if we don't have to. And if you look at the, the elevation from Griff Harris looking at it, you'll see that the condos, those are condos, not single families, and it's also an LBR2 zone to the west of me, they have also green trees, large trees on their property. So there are gonna be some trees on our property that will be removed, but we'll also be replacing some trees. So Eric, can you go back to...
I'm specifically talking to the house that adjoins you on Taylor.
Right, right here. So you see he has...
No, that's not Taylor.
That's East Putnam, the back house.
You're talking on the north, north corner?
Yeah.
Can you go back to the, the first, the ground floor plan? So her house is right here.
Correct, and there, there looks like, um...
So there's a fence there, we're gonna have a row of trees, and we're gonna contact her if she would like us to put screening on her side as well.
My request was very simple, show the houses adjoining properties, so we have relationship to your structure.
Yep.
And if we could just talk about the rear corner there, is that, remind me again, is that fill with a wall along the edge of the parking, or is it a cut with the wall along the edge of the parking there?
It's a cut.
It's a cut, okay.
It's, you know, most likely it's ledge, so I don't know if it's gonna be a wall, or it's gonna just be a reshaping, and, and, you know, depending on how it comes out.
Because as I, the, the site is being excavated, for lack of a better word, on the southern half, and the northern half is being left as is or graded, so that it, it raises up to get to the rear, right?
Yeah, this, oh, sorry. This, this section is being...
Some of this is being cut, but we're, we're coming from grade here, we're coming, coming around, and then we're cutting down into this as well.
Got it. Mostly right here, this is, this is where most of the, I can go back to that section.
The grade at this, at the parking lot is 21, and then the top of wall, the second wall is 44.
And Mr. McRae, what, what second wall are you referring to that?
This is in the, this is what I guess, the northwest corner, that's being, yeah, that cut area.
Yeah.
Right, there's two walls there.
Right.
This is at 50, the property line here.
Sorry, the, the back, the north property line in that, in this area is at 50, and yes, we're at 16 feet and 15 feet at the, at the building here, street's at 11 here. I believe we're at about like 19 on East Putnam here. So I think actually, you know, we've talked about actually, you know, pushing the building back, sidewalks, and, and really, I think a concentration of what's happening up with those trees on that, in that area. I think actually, if it's a foundation that's holding up that ridge, and that, whatever's left over, it's gonna have to be over-excavated, so I'm not confident that any of those trees will be saved. Because if I'm putting a foundation six feet off of that line, I'm gonna be digging into the, the setback to get the foundation, you know, the excavation ready to put the foundation in, and then backfill. So to me, it seems that all of those trees are gonna be gone.
A lot of those trees are gonna be gone. I'm not, you know, it's, we, we've got ledge, you can, you can see it coming out onto East Putnam Avenue, you know, so. I'm not worried about having to put a, a footing three feet or five feet beyond that cut, because I'm confident we'll be able to tie into the, to the ledge that's there, and do a, if we have to, we'll do a, a property line footing the other way, so.
The, the last thing I think tonight I want to leave on is construction logistics.
Well, we're still at the preliminary.
I know, but I'm just saying is, you have no space to work from. There needs to be some thought of where people park, how this is gonna happen.
We actually have, because we're keeping our tenant M&amp;T Bank, the logistics of this are going to be, the, it's gonna have to be a phased construction, because they wanna be in operation the, the, the whole time. So even though it seems as though, it's just gonna, it's gonna add to the length of time, but...
Couldn't you just put them in the empty People's Bank across the street? Sorry. Just, it was just a crack, I'm sorry. Okay, so guys, once again, we're all right with the FAR, you're still looking for the building to push back, you're looking to address that tree loss. Summarize.
Yes, tree loss, I understood that, yes. The, they've pushed the building down farther, they've done the second back, second floor setback, I think actually that, our thoughts on that may have been misconstrued as terms of pushing the whole building back. Looking at what's the site impact on the street, on the post road, with the sidewalks, the green, the landscape, those kind of things. You know, minimizing hardscape up against the building if it can be green, that kind of thing. I think the...
But one of, one of the things that we had batted around, and Andy spoke to it, and this may be, there may be logistics that we, we can't do, do this, but is it, our thought was that if we could get more green to the street, and more, and, and then we just come kind of into our, our spaces, you know, and we bring the sidewalk, so the sidewalk's actually on our property, not outside the property, so that we get that whole, you know, spot for green and trees and, and light.
This is a weird case, because you're building up against a, a wall to the west, you have no landscaping to speak of in front of the CBS. You know, so I think any offer there is good. Again, my concern is pushing towards a residential neighborhood in the back. I think we need to see a balance between the post road and that neighbor in the rear, because those are the, you know, the post road's been the post road, been the post road, I can't, we don't have the space with this type of development to get what I like is what we do on the West Putnam, where you have five feet of green sidewalk, green, you know, so.
He's sweating.
Again, I wanna see the houses, and I'm more concerned about screening the neighbors to the rear.
And if, do we have any public comment? Yes, sir. Good, well, I'm glad that you're here, and that you waited patiently all these hours.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Burke, and my house is up on the ridge.
Ah, good you came.
I'm sitting on that ledge that everyone's been talking about. And there currently, I, so I have that yellow house in the barn, I took some photographs of parking, and, which is also a concern. What shall I do with them?
If you share them with us, we'll have to give them to Patrick, and he'll, he'll keep them, he'll never give them back to you. Are you okay with that?
That's all right, yeah, that's just fine. So start this way?
Yeah, you could start at the end, and we'll hand them down, and...
It's the record that keeps them, for the record, it's not Mr. LaRoe.
I gotta get a couple of smiles tonight, you know that.
So my concern is, first, I have a stone foundation that's sitting right on top of that ledge, that's gonna be chipped or blasted away. And my house and my barn are both of that vintage where they built with stone foundations, so I'm concerned there's a photograph of that, that'll come around. I'm also, they, on the other side of my property, they've just taken a big chunk of hill out in a residential property, so, and then when they built that house on Taylor, which is directly behind the, the proposed property here, they took a big chunk of the hill out there, and so I'm not a geologist, though I did, that raises a question in my mind of how stable is that rock now, that it's been hacked away from two sides and now a third? Also, we all live in New England, and we like the change in seasons, and so I have what the realtors call winter water views, which I can see the tidal pool across the post road from my house up on the ridge there. And in the summer, when the leaf out, it blocks everything, and I just have a beautiful wall of green, and, and I'm afraid that I'll lose that.
I think that you're right to be concerned.
And, and the construction will be, I don't know, maybe 25 or less feet from my dining room window. So now I can sit at my dining room table and decide, I can see the, the traffic on the, on the Mayans River Bridge, and decide if I have to go north to take the bridge or take the post road. Just little personal things that it's, you know, the greater good may outweigh, but these are my, my problems.
Well, we want you to keep your sense of place, so well, that's why Nick had looked at very specifically, had been out there looking at the trees, and had raised the concern.
Thank you.
And so, how much depths do you have in your backyard there?
In the side is, well, I have about...
Behind your dining room, how much depths do you have?
Oh, behind the dining room, probably 10 feet, maybe?
You know, 'cause what we could do is ask the applicant if they would consider screening on the, doing something to screen on the property owner's side. We did that on, what was that house we did that on?
I know the, I know the ad decision, I can't remember the address, though.
It's a little fishy to do it.
It's tricky, and it's also ledge, so it...
Yeah, no, it doesn't grow well. Doesn't grow well.
No.
Yeah.
I think that's why I keep on going, let's see the adjacent property owners on the site plan, and let's understand the setbacks, and, and making sure. The other thing, it would be nice to know the, the elevation, how much is this building sticking up above that ledge?
It looks like it's gonna be maybe 40 feet, and I'll look into the building rather than...
Well, you might be able to get grape upon, too, which, that's why I think it would be helpful for us to see your houses in proportion to this.
Do you have a barrier on your side right now? You just don't drop off a ledge, right?
Uh, no, well, there's a, just a split rail fence, and, and then the trees, but...
Then how far does it drop?
It's about 30 feet.
I said you have children, like the play.
I, I did, and what they did was, they...
Dogs don't jump up at first.
They tied a line to the top of the split rail fence, so they could lower themselves down and go to the pizza places in the middle of Koskow, and then they'd climb back up. They, they worked around it. I'm also concerned about parking, there are 27 spaces, and this may have been addressed already, but there are 27 spaces there, I counted them the other day. been addressed already, but there are twenty-seven spaces there, I counted them the other day, and, and there are fifty-two listed in the proposal, our street is the very next one down, and it only has parking on one side, Field Road does, so if there's an overflow, where would those, you know, we would be the natural place to, to put cars, and, and it's, there are non-conforming two-family houses there now where the tenants park on the streets, so that's a consideration.
My guess is they would try to park behind the C V S.
Yeah, well.
That would be human nature.
But C V S is, it's, it's difficult to find a parking space there in the afternoons, any given day of the week, so that, just, just another observation, I took photographs there as well.
I would pull up the rope that you have for your kids, so that they can't park up there and go down.
And draw, lower themselves, thank you. And, and do we really need, with, with Amazon, the, the effect that it's having, I mean, I know up in New Canaan, they can't keep anybody on, in any of the retail space up there, and, and we've got some empty stores, do we really, you know, it's just a kind of macroeconomic question, is that going to happen? And, um, do, so the, the bank would be the existing bank, I guess, so as a former banker, I always ask, is it, is it, were the gas stations in Coscobb more toxic to the environment than the bankers from time to time?
I'm not, we're not going to touch that one. I used to, I used to run service stations.
You, you may win the contest. Traffic, I guess, just is, are we going to add another fifty-two cars in the middle of Coscobb, and what, you know, what will that do to the Post Road traffic, so I'm sure you've heard some of these arguments before.
Some of them we have, surprisingly, as you heard earlier, the neighborhood has been supportive.
Yeah, I was surprised.
But they're not adjoining the way you are, so your concerns have a lot of weight, and I, I'm, I know Nick walked it specifically to look at that concern, so.
Yes, I, I very much appreciate you're all listening, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? No. Yes, Mr. Yaski.
The third lane. You were going to say something about that, okay.
Um, Eric, could you flick ahead to the, Chris's study?
Right there.
Okay, so this is a study showing, putting a third lane on the right, and we're only be broadening the paved surface by about two feet, and we can fit that second lane in there, so it, we would prefer to have it.
Why did the neighbors, why, why was they, why were they saying they didn't want it? I guess I'm confused.
Uh, yeah, generally speaking, they want to protect, protect the, um, the walkability of Coscobb, generally speaking, and looking at this particular project, there was a couple of people that said, well, it's going to take me longer to cross over three lanes rather than two lanes, and that becomes less safe for me if I'm walking around Coscobb. And our traffic expert says you're really only adding about one or two seconds of the time it's going to take you to cross over, and we could also do it no turn on red, uh, that's another way of dealing with that situation. So it's really, as far as a traffic expert's concerned, it's really not an issue, and actually, it's very helpful, and the town traffic engineer, indicator engineer, indicated that he would like us to add that third lane, but as I said, we're open to whichever direction the commission wants to go, after consultation with the town traffic engineer, and, and further input from the neighbors, I guess, but I didn't think it was an overwhelming issue, but generally speaking, as it said, they were very, um, animated about making sure that Coscobb stays pedestrian friendly, and I was head of the Safewalks to school program, um, fifteen years ago, I guess, when we did a lot of things in Coscobb, and many of those, Peter Berg was with me on that, Brad Markowitz is with me on that, so I'm familiar with a lot of these issues, and I get it, the general sentiment, I don't think this is going to go against that.
What that means is then, that traffic that might come out and turn left is going to have to go back through Coscobb, right? They can't come out.
C V S.
So we're going to go back through that?
Possibly.
Back on to, what is that, what's the name of that road there?
Sinaway.
Sinaway, right, everything goes back out, Sinaway, you can go left.
Well, there was, that was, conversation was had in that regard, too, and people said, well, they do it there now anyway, they cut through, go through the bank, or got the, um, or getting into Sinaway, et cetera, so that wasn't as generally a big concern, and I think it also goes along with, too bad Katie's not here, but when we're talking about twelve oh five, East Putnam, and approaching McDonald's, or Pet Panchi, or both of them, and trying to do some sort of collective parking in the back where it's more shared, and it keeps the landscaping on the front, I think that kind of goes along with this idea, too.
So everybody at this project's going to have to go out through Sinaway if they want to go left?
No.
Well, no, what they're saying is, these neighbors are saying, don't do the three, so everybody in the project is going to have to go out through Sinaway if they want to go left.
No, you can go up to the stop sign, stop light, right by cross, and take a left at the light. It's a long light, and you can only get about three or four cars in before it turns again, so that would alleviate that situation to a certain extent, because half the cars that are going west would be one lane, and the others would be going the other.
The problem's going to be the cutting through the back lot of C V S.
But it's staggered, so you're not going to have it as a steady.
Having done it myself many times. I know those tricks.
Yeah. Which is property also owned by the same property.
Good to come back and do this one more time, and then I think we would send you on to A R C.
Okay.
Once, I, I don't think, I'm not hearing bulk issues, but I think you've.
It may be dictated, though, by some Mr. McRae's comments and Mr. Fox's comments, to the extent there's a push, both in the front and the back, we'll see, that may impact that.
And also from the side.
And now from the side. Yeah, so.
I, I was just talking, uh, with Mr. McRae about, um, if. If the bar was along the, um. Taylor Drive. That would alleviate this, the encroachment on the neighbors a bit.
If the bar was along, and see, right now, it's set back from Taylor. Oh, okay, okay.
So you'd have an L-shaped going the opposite direction, so it could, it could more.
That's what we had initially, and we went back the other way.
Yeah, so, but the idea is that, the, the trick here is to still create that green buffer along the street, so you'd have to have that twenty-five feet or whatever you're doing, which is okay, and you might need to set back the third floor, but what that would allow you to do is have, uh, outdoor parking in the back there, and maybe some out, uh, parking underneath as well, uh, just, you're just reversing it, and you're creating some separation, and you're also creating a kind of a, a, a real streetscape through the town, um, and the, um, you know, maybe, maybe the retail, um, that goes up the hill on, um, Putnam, um, maybe, I don't know if that's the best location for it, maybe it really wants to be at the corner and along Taylor, you know, partially, or something like that.
That's so funny, Mr., because when we initially set together some conceptual designs, that's more or less how we had it, and after meeting with Katie, I think a couple of times, again, I'm too bad she's not here to speak to the issue, we decided to reverse that and push everything back so we could tuck it in to the hillscape, that was the idea, to have less of an impact, visual impact on the street of a tall building along Taylor.
I think that one of the things that, that helped define a streetscape is not having parking in front, and you have, you actually have, um, the, you know, you have a, um, sidewalks are green, the building, the entrances, and you go into the building, uh, by, by pushing it back through the street and creating a parking lot, um, having more of that hardscape takes away from the feeling of, of a nice urban condition. So we don't really, we don't like having parking in the front, generally, because of that.
Right, no, in fact, most of our regulations forbidding.
On Taylor, okay, I just, it's funny, it's a complete turnaround from what we had originally.
Then, then you wouldn't have to get into the issue of, of, you could have those trees back there, you could still have some parking on the other side of the building.
No, 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 sorry, we keep the formality even though our eyes are closed.
So I'm just mentioning, because you're, you're going to have to, you, you, we mentioned how we're concerned about how this is situated, and how it fits in with the rest of, with, with, with the neighbors, and I think that there's, by putting it along the street, along Taylor, it's more consistent with an urban edge.
I think with that, with that, there's, there's actually a host of other issues, because I think if you, if you chart, if you, if you start to do that, um, you're, you initially need to get underneath the building.
I know that.
When you come right out the driveway.
Okay, we're done. We're done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and so end is the public meeting. All right, guys, one more quick agenda item, if we could do it fast, guys, um, if we could do it fast, um, we're overdue to hold an election for officers of the commission, could I have a nomination for somebody somewhere? Oh, I'm sorry, um, I would like to move that we put the election on the agenda. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Andy, for that. Okay, now, could we have a motion?
I would like to nominate Margarita T. Albon, chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, somebody seconded, it was leavy by a hair, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okey dokey, do I have a nomination for secretary?
Yes, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. McRae for, uh, secretary.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And so we live to fight another day.
Oh, should we vote on the mascot?